Want to do the same to Rachel? Rachel too, please.
Thank you.
We are live to YouTube.
Did you pull this one in?
I did.
Okay.
Just missing to current score. A minute and a half to show. Thirty seconds to show. We are live on show.
I would like to welcome everybody to our council meeting. I want to acknowledge the media partners and broadcasting partners who report on our meetings and broadcast them and thank them for that work. Want to begin by acknowledging with respect that we are in Robinson Huron Treaty territory, in the land in which we are gathered in traditional territory of the Musissnabik and known historically by them as Baoteng. Baoteng is the Hobart and Garden River First Nation, Batuana First Nation, and this historic Sioux State Marie Mayne Council. Madam Clerk.
Under Agenda Item Two, I have a motion by Councilor Scott. I will change that to Counselor Garty. Councilors Garty and Bezo Allen resolved that the minutes of regular council meeting of August twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, and special council meeting of September fifteen, twenty-twenty-two be approved.
All in favor. Carry.
Under Agenda Item Four, Declaration of pecuniary interest, Counselor Hillsinger has declared a conflict with respect to the planning item short-term rental accommodation as she is an employee of the Water Tower Inn.
Any other conflicts to be declared, counsel? Seeing none?
Under Agenda Item Five, a motion by Councilors Garty and Dufour resolved that the agenda for September twenty-twenty-two city council meeting as presented be approved.
All in favor. Carry.
Agenda Item Six, Proclamations. The first one is the National Truth and Reconciliation Day.
Thank you. Whereas in twenty-twenty, the government of Canada introduced Bill C five to make September thirtieth a federal statutory holiday called the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation in response to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada Call to Action Number Eighty, and it received royal assent in twenty-twenty-one. Whereas the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, which is also known as National Orange Shirt Day, is a day to honor survivors, their families and communities, and commemorates the history and legacy of residential schools. It also demonstrates a commitment to reconciliation and affirms that every child matters. Whereas the city of Sioux State Marie is committed to the truth and reconciliation journey and recognizes the importance of being honest and truthful about the times in our national and local history when of ignorance and intolerance we did not. Whereas the city values its relationship with Batuana First Nation, Garden River First Nation, Indigenous Friendship Centre, the Maytee Nation of Ontario, and Mississauga Cree First Nation, and the tremendous work of these communities, dedicated local organizations, and advocates that are committed to furthering understanding the difficulties of our past in an effort to help us build a better future together. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, as the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation in the city of Sioux State Marie, and encourage residents to honor residential school survivors, their families and communities, in an effort to ensure that public commemoration of the history and legacy of residential schools remains a vital component of the reconciliation process.
And Agenda Item six point two is Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, I apologize. There are a number of proclamations today, and they are usually in order, and they are not. So. So we have, do we have members from Zonta International here with us tonight? We do not. Whereas Zonta International's mandate is to advocate the status of women through service and advocacy, and whereas the Zonta Club of Sioux State Marie area advocates for women's health through local service projects, in particular, the ovarian cancer awareness camping, and they ask the community to join them in learning about one of the most deadly cancers among women. Whereas ovarian cancer candidates strives to create awareness of this disease, provide women care and supports research to change the outcomes of those living with the disease. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-twenty-two as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, and our goal, citizens, is to share the information about this often overlooked and under-diagnosed cancer.
Agenda Item six point three is Ontario Cadets Week.
Whereas, we have, we have some cadets here. We do. I, I've been noticing you recently at the grocery store doing your service, and I want to thank you for that. Maybe if we could all stand so that we could recognize the cadets, we'll catch you on TV, and people around the community will see you, and I just want to... I've always been impressed to participate in your events and your ceremonies. It's really important that you're doing what you're doing. You're making a significant contribution to your community, and as the mayor of the community, I want to thank you for it. Whereas Bill Forty-five officially recognizes the first week of October as Ontario Cadets Week. The three cadet programs in Ontario Army, SEAL, Sea, and Air will be celebrated across the province. Whereas the city of Sioux State Marie hosts all three cadet units with, with the community, and Cadets Week is an opportunity to recognize the outstanding young Canadians whose development through cadet programming will help them be successful. Whereas cadet programs have been thriving in Sioux State Marie for more than one hundred and fifteen years, thanks to the efforts of volunteers and supporters. This week shall honor Sea, Army, and Air cadets ages twelve to eighteen. Whereas the Canadian Cadet Organization has been providing local youth valuable and unique training along with opportunities specific to creating the next generation of proud Canadians. These programs continue to evolve to meet the needs of our community and those of our youth, providing hundreds of thousands of volunteer hours to support local organizations. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim the week of October first to October seventh, twenty-twenty-two, as Cadets Week, and invite everyone to learn more about the programs available and benefits to the youth in our city. Thank you very much.
Agenda Item six point four is Orchestra Month.
Do we have anybody here from the Sioux Symphony Orchestra? The twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three season marks the Sioux Symphony Orchestra's fifty-fiftieth anniversary season. Whereas the Sioux Symphony Orchestra has made significant contributions to the Sioux's arts community as the largest orchestral ensemble in the region. In addition to its regular orchestral concerts enjoyed by hundreds of local patrons, the Sioux Symphony Orchestra runs outreach and education programs with local schools, retirement homes, and other low-barrier venues around the community, promoting the love of music in diverse communities. Whereas the Sioux Symphony Orchestra is made up mostly of volunteer musicians from both sides of the border who offer their time to help share their love of music with the community. They deserve much recognition for their commitment to the organization, the community, and the arts. And whereas although the Sioux Symphony Orchestra has experienced some difficulty in past years, is now back on solid footing and eager to see what the next fifty years bring. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty-twenty-two, Orchestral Month, in recognition of the opening of the Sioux Symphony Orchestra's fiftieth anniversary season. Thank you very much, and they deserve a round of applause for sure.
Agenda Item six point five, World Habitat Day.
Whereas Habitat for Humanity Canada was founded in nineteen eighty-five and has grown to forty-nine active affiliates serving almost four hundred communities, and volunteers have logged more than eleven million hours contributing to the completion of over forty-three hundred homes for low-income Canadian families, including the completion of fourteen homes in Sioux State Marie. Whereas Habitat for Humanity believes in a world where everyone has a safe and decent place to live. Whereas with the help of volunteers, donors, and Habitat homeowners, local habitats like ours here in Sioux State Marie help build and rehabilitate decent and affordable homes, from single-family houses to multi-unit developments. Habitat does not give away free homes. Homeowners pay an affordable mortgage geared to their income and volunteer five hundred hours. This model of affordable homeownership bridges a gap by providing people with the opportunity to purchase their own home. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim October third, twenty-twenty-two, was World Habitat Day in the city of Sioux State Marie, and encourage residents to support Habitat for Humanity and learn more about the importance of affordable housing. I think we have some Habitat volunteers representatives here, do we? I want to thank you for the great work you're doing in our community. It's been really impressive, and it's really nice to see, so thank you.
Agenda Item six point six, Childcare Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day.
This one is near and dear to me because I have three little girls who are on a daily basis taken care of by childcare educators and early childhood educators, and they do a fantastic job, and so this is, this is a really important recognition. Whereas the benefits of high-quality early learning and childcare for intellectually, emotional, and social and physical development and later life outcomes are well-established. Whereas childcare promotes the well-being of children in response to the needs of families in the broader community by supporting quality of life so that citizens can fully participate in and contribute to the economic and social fabric of their community. And whereas trained, knowledgeable, registered early childhood educators and childcare staff are key to quality and early learning in childcare programs, and they are vital to the success of early learning and childcare systems across the country. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, to be designated the Twenty-Second Annual Childcare Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day in recognition of childcare workers in the community. A special thank you to the great childcare workers that take care of Isla, Bowie, and Alice when I can.
Six point seven, Take Back the Night.
Do we have anybody here from Take Back the Night? Whereas Take Back the Night is an international annual event where people across the world step forward to support survivors and protest against all forms of sexual violence, including sexual assault, sexual abuse, trafficking, stalking, gender harassment, and relationship violence. Whereas this is an opportunity for people of all genders, ages, and backgrounds to join together and speak out about the effects of violence on survivors, celebrate survivor's strength. Whereas on October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, the people of Sioux State Marie are invited to gather, gather to stop the violence and take back the night by participating in a march to demonstrate their commitment to eliminate violence in our community. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby declare October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two as Take Back the Night and encourage all residents of the city to attend the event.
Item six point eight, Latin Hispanic Heritage Month.
Whereas on October twenty-sixth, twenty-sixteen, the House of Commons officially recognized October as Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas June twentieth, twenty-eighteen, the House of Commons officially recognized Latin American Heritage Month under Bill S two eighteen. Whereas Hispanic Canadian Heritage Month provides the twenty-three Latin Hispanic countries with the opportunity to share information with other cultural communities within the context of the Canadian values while preserving their language, diverse cultures, and traditions. Whereas Hispanic and Latin American Month is an opportunity to celebrate the achievements and contributions of Hispanic Canadians as well as share their history, their contributions in their culture. Whereas Hispanic Canadians are committed to preserving their rich heritage and language while contributing to the growth and development of the city of Sioux State Marie and their Canadian mosaic in the fields of art, music, literature, film, economics, science, sport, medicine, education, and public life. Whereas Hispanic Canadian Heritage Month demonstrates the city of Sioux State brings commitment to equity and inclusion through community initiatives, participation, engagement, and activities. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty-twenty-two as Latin Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Sioux State Marie.
And next is the Tec-Lakeway Collegiate and Vocational School Reunion Week.
We do have people here from the reunion weekend, I think. So thank you for, for your work and your contribution in bringing this event together. Whereas in nineteen oh nine, a technical training wing within Sioux Collegiate Institute was opened and led to the establishment of the Sioux Technical and Commercial High School nineteen twenty-two. Whereas the school evolved from a technical commercial school to a composite school in nineteen sixty-nine, being known as Lakeway Collegiate Vocational School until closed in nineteen eighty-seven. Whereas former students will be gathered to celebrate the school's one-hundred-year anniversary with a reunion to be held in October twenty-twenty-two. Classmates will come together from across the country to make a special effort to be part of it. Whereas graduates have become outstanding examples of civic-minded citizens who have contributed to our community. And therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim October seventh to October ninth, twenty-twenty-two, as reunion weekend for former students of the Lakeway Tech Collegiate Vocational School, and wish a memorable and enjoyable attendance for all. Thank you.
And item six point ten is Acquired Brain Injury Awareness.
That is not in this file, Madam Clerk, but I'll pull it up when you describe. Malcolm's going to double-check to see if it missed ones. Oh, it's the Canadian Royal Purple. Okay, yeah, we've got it, sorry. I saw you up there, yeah. So I do, I do have your proclamation. So the Canadian Royal Purple recognizes the intersection of acquired brain injury and the incidence of interpersonal violence which affects as high as one in three women in Canada. And whereas the third Thursday of October is recognized as special day of connection between the Canadian Royal Purple, the communities it serves, and women shelters across Canada. Whereas the Canadian Royal Purple has adopted brain injury awareness and prevention as their official cause. Whereas Sioux State Marie Royal Purple Lodge One fifty-five is a valuable asset to our community. And therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim October twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, as Canadian Royal Purple's National Purple Thursday in Sioux State Marie, and recognize Purple Thursday as a special day of recognition within our community. So thank you very much. That, Madam Clerk, I think is my last proclamation.
That's your last proclamation?
Actually, ever.
Nope. I think we've got a secret one for you. The next presentation is Lake Shore Group Proposed Renewable Energy Project. That's with respect to the request for council support resolution appearing under eight point three point one, and we have David Ashburn and several other representatives of that group on a call.
Okay, so this is six eleven, followed by seven point eight point three point one?
It's with, with respect to eight point three point one.
Eight point three point. And Mr., you say Ashburn?
Yeah, there are several people representing.
Okay, so we, we.
Hello there.
How are you doing, sir?
Good. My name is Tom May, and I will be presenting on behalf of the group this evening.
Good. You, are you, do you need the screen? Is there a deck that you're, there you go. Okay, we're in your hands, sir.
Yeah, so I'm not sure who's controlling the deck, but.
All right. Our deputy clerk is controlling the deck, so when you wanted to flip to the next slide, you can just indicate that.
Thank you very much. All right, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for the opportunity to brief you on our proposed power project. My name is Tom May. I am the president of BioVeld Energy Ventures, and I'm presenting this evening on behalf of BioVeld Energy Ventures SB Energy and BMI Group. We are all partners in the development of new power projects in Ontario, including battery storage project we're proposing for Sioux State Marie, which we'll be discussing this evening. Joining me this evening and available to answer questions are Jackson Salivara, who's VP of Strategy and Investments with SB Energy, Paul Veldman, who is managing partner with BMI Group, Rob Kolbeck, who's a managing director with BioVeld Energy Ventures, and then two professionals from the Lake Shore Group, who are land use planning consultants, Rick Pennycook and Dave Ashburn. So we can flip to the next slide. I think as, I believe you are already aware from a previous presentation you've had from another project, the IASO, the Independence, Ontario Independent System Operator, who is the grid operator in Ontario, is currently seeking proposals for new power projects in Ontario to address critical demands that, or supply needs that they see coming up in twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-thirty and beyond. We're proposing a new hundred and fifty megawatt storage project, battery storage project located at the former mill site at ninety-five Huron Street. Our proposed project would install approximately a hundred and fifty megawatts. The actual, the final size will depend on the IASO's assessment of, of the grid capacity and how much they, they want to procure in this area. But we're proposing approximately a hundred and fifty megawatts. It would either be lithium-ion or flow battery. And, and as you can see from the site with, or from the, the slide presentation, we would propose to use a portion of the former mill site for the battery storage project, and this would leave, and potentially facilitate or be a catalyst for redevelopment of the remaining site and, and some of the historical building that is there. Slide two, please. So the project would provide non-emitting source of energy capacity to the Ontario grid, and they are particularly focused on projects that can be online by twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, and this project can do that. And the, the IASO has identified pretty critical grid needs and, and, and some particularly, as you may have heard, in the northeast area with the, with the additional expansion of mining and, and other loads in the northeast. The facility would draw power from the grid during low-demand periods and return the power to grid, power to the grid during high-demand periods when supply is tight, and also can provide enhanced security to the grid in the Sioux State Marie area, benefiting both Sioux State Marie PUC and, and Ontario Hydro in the area. These, these projects can, in addition to just energy, they can provide voltage support and, and various ancillary services that are critical for operation of the grid. Next slide, please. So we believe the project enhances Sioux State Marie's position as an, and as an innovation in the innovation leader in the energy sector. It will require the installation of grid equipment and battery components. We intend to maintain the historic structures, and as we said, we think we, we think it will actually be a catalyst for additional development around those things, around those sensitive facilities. And then these projects have very minimal environmental noise and traffic impact post-construction, so, you know, and, and even on a construction basis, as construction projects go, I don't and even on a construction basis, as construction projects go, I don't think these are terribly impactful. Once they're operating, there really isn't a lot of of noise and traffic that would create any issues in the area. Next slide. So the, you know, this is part of BMI and its affiliates actually own the site and the other sites we're looking at in Ontario. And I would say BMI has a very progressive approach to redevelopment of these former industrial sites. And the intention here is to end up with a project in this site that can provide reliability to the grid, bring substantial investment to the area. I think the entire capital investment, depending on size, would be, you know, approaching three hundred million, while still allowing for the redevelopment of the Romanesque buildings in the area. So BMI has a long history of similar projects in other areas. Next slide. I think that, so next steps, we are in early stages of development of the project. Our submission to the IASO is due late in Q four, December, with projects being awarded sometime in the new year, January or February, is our expectation of when the IASO will award projects. We would begin construction in twenty twenty-three, targeting being online by May of twenty twenty-five. And we intend to do community engagement sessions throughout Q four to get community input on the project and as well as input from the city and Sioux-Sault Marie PUC if they have if they have interest in the project. And so the next step is really, we would look for a motion of support from the council endorsing or expressing your support for the project to be done. And then we would update you as we work through that process.
Okay, so thank you very much for that presentation. I have a list here of councillors who have put their hands up with either questions or comments, so I will I'll begin that list. Starting with councillor Shoemaker.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Through you to, I think it was Mr. May who was presenting. I'm pretty sure you said that there's common ownership here between the proposed site of the project and the buildings that are on site. So that would be the pulp tower, I imagine, and then the, I'm not sure what the back building's called, but is that, did I hear that right?
Yeah, so I'll maybe I'll pass this on to to Paul Veldman from BMI. BMI is actually the owner of the site. BioVeld Energy Ventures is a affiliate or subsidiary of BMI and we are, BioVeld Energy's focus is entirely on energy-related matters and power developments around BMI's sites and projects. And then SB Energy is a renewable energy developer with substantial experience and scale globally on renewable projects and battery storage projects. So I will pass you on to Paul, who can speak a little bit more on the site.
Hello councillor Shoemaker. Yes, that's correct. Two, three, one is the owner of the property that on which the pulp tower and board mill sit. We also are the representatives for the lands just tucked in behind the board mill that go up to the bridge, under the bridge and on the other side of the bridge. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, although I was kind of hoping that wasn't the answer because it raises a number of concerns that I've got. The state of repair of these buildings, I realize that's not what we're discussing today, but I think it goes hand in hand with the approval you're looking for. I'm personally not comfortable approving, giving any council endorsement of any project until the state of repair of these buildings is brought into a, you know, more acceptable state under our property standards by law. So I don't know if there's a question in there, but perhaps I'll offer you the opportunity to comment on that.
In terms of the pulp tower and the board mill, we have undertaken and you'll see more action in coming weeks to ensure and I think have been in cooperation with city council around the safety of the buildings. I think there's been concerns, but we are expeditiously in weeks to come. You'll see a lot more movement from us there to ensure that there is, that that's been dealt with. Just to be clear, maybe to echo Tom's point, this power generation project is not slated to be within these buildings. I don't think that was your question, but I do take your point and we have taken action in that regard.
Yeah, you're right. That wasn't exactly the question, but you're here tonight and I know that this has been a constant. I mean, there's been multiple fires at the pulp tower. There's, I mean, the picture that's shown on slide, whatever it is, seven or eight, five actually, is representative of what exists next to quite an attractive tourist setup right next to it in the old machine shop and the Algoa Conservatory. So I hear what you're saying and I can only trust what you're saying based on your comments there. Personally, my support will come after we see that progress happen, not before.
You can't, thank you councillor Shoemaker. Councillor Dufour?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. My question's through you to Mr. Mayor, any member of your group who care to comment. Can your group share where their plan is to connect to any transmission or power grid lines? Do you envision that infrastructure being on that land or having to extend transmission infrastructure to those lands?
Rob Kolbeck, are you on? You want to speak to that?
Yeah, the intent here is to connect to the clerk one, clerk two transmission towers that are directly adjacent to the property. They supply the hydroelectric generation facility that's just beside the property.
I believe they're on the other side of the conservatory. Clerk one and clerk two. Is that correct? Is that the transmission infrastructure on the other side of the conservatory?
Yes, but my understanding is that they go up the road and we would be coming across the property there.
Okay, so there would be new transmission lines required hypothetically to cross, I believe that's Huron there and then over the the municipal road that goes to the canal?
That's my understanding.
The transformer, the switches and transformers effectively to connect this will be on the site lands as part of the project. So maybe.
Yeah, I think what councillor Dufour is trying to get a sense of is so that appreciate there'll be infrastructure on the site. Then where, what path geographically are you moving that power from the site into the system so that it can be distributed from there? So I guess he, I think he wants to get a sense of where those lines will be running. Will they be above ground? Will they be below ground? Where will they be running?
Yeah, are they going to be running through the, on municipal property or are they going to be running through Mr. Porco's property, above ground, below ground? All that stuff. I'm just trying to understand what the surrounding community impacts might be.
That's where in the initial planning stages, we haven't developed that part of the project yet, but it could be either underground or above ground.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I mean, with respect, you would need easements, like just to be, yeah, so you'd have to run it where you had the permission to run it.
That's correct, yeah.
Maybe I recognize your early stages, but where do you perceive or where do you conceive of that permission delay? Where do you see that? Where would you see that happening?
You would have to go through the talent, the yes, and obviously to get that. And underground, we were just, underground is a possibility. It does not have to be.
No. No, I think the sense of what council is getting is if council endorsed this and because, to be clear, maybe this is for the people watching at home. This is part of the process that you have to go through to apply to the IASO. You have to have something from the municipality to do so, which is why we're seeing.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
And but if council theoretically endorses it, I think they're looking for a sense of what that means to the abutting property and to the aesthetics of the area and to neighbors in the area, because we do have a very nice site that's been developed next door to this. And I think they're looking for a sense of how those lines would run and how they would interact with that site. So if that's the, if you can give us more clarity on that, that would be great. If you can't give us more clarity on that, we'll just have to accept the information that you have at your disposal today.
So I think much of this detail is part of the more detailed design and permitting process. And so we're certainly not looking for final approval on permitting or anything like that. And some of that is also discussion with the IASO on the grid interconnection and what they want for an interconnection. And so there's a much more detailed design and permitting process that the project would still have to go through. This is very, you know, early stages and in all of these projects. And so I think the IASO process is a little, it would be nice if the process, you know, were, or the timing were a little bit different. But in this case, we have to go forward with initial proposals and the design and permitting. There's still a lot of work to do on all of that.
Yeah, I think it would be nice from the municipality's perspective if the process required you to come get the okay from municipality farther down the road. We recognize that you're here because the process requires you to come get it now and that's not your doing. It would be preferable if the IASO sent you here after you had baked this cake a little bit more than you.
Well, right, the one thing I would point out on that is that an endorsement of the project at this point doesn't tie the city's hands on approval of permitting or anything else. And so ultimately, there still has to be actual, you know, construction permits and interconnection permits and rights of ways and all, you know, a lot of things that will require approval from, you know, the city and others. And that happens as part of the more detailed design and permitting process. And so at this point, we're left with kind of endorsements of a concept far before all of those details are worked out and are still subject. I mean, I would assume any endorsement is still subject to all of the permitting and approvals on final design.
Okay, that's a good perspective. I'm going to ask the city's planner just to speak to that. So Mr. Tenazzo, understanding what was asked by council and what I tried to articulate, what I understood to be the issue that was being raised and what's being shared by the developers, if council were to endorse this idea in concept, would the city then thereafter have the opportunity to ensure that the infrastructure was put in places that was agreeable to the city?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to council. There's a few different things at play here and I'm not a hundred percent sure whether this particular project would be exempt from municipal approvals, much like many renewable projects historically were. However, I would feel that consents would be required for long-term easements, which require committee of adjustment approval. It's difficult to tell at this point whether zoning approvals would be required. There is a very site-specific zoning on this property, although we do permit utilities of this nature at all zones. There is a holding provision that was put in place by the, I believe the current owners were involved in that. So there could potentially be a bit of a road of approvals ahead of ahead of an actual development here, municipal approvals.
So the zoning in theory might be there, but if it wasn't, the approval tonight, if it's granted, would not interfere or supersede the developer's requirement to come and get the proper zone.
Mr. Mayor, that's my understanding that if the zoning is applicable, then, you know, section thirty-four of the Planning Act would apply, which means public notice and ultimately council approval if rezonings are required.
Yeah, go ahead, councillor Shoemaker.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Tenazzo. If rezoning isn't required, though, then do we have any parameters around where on the site this can go?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. At that point, then we're looking at potential consents and easements that need to get, you know, long-term easements that may require approval through the committee of adjustment.
This is Paul Veldman here, perhaps as well, and not to shoot myself in the foot, but most probably this would require like site plan control alongside building permits, obviously. We do anticipate having to walk through those processes in terms of this ultimately being constructed in a form that's fitting to the area and its neighbors.
Did you have anything to add to that, Mr. Tenazzo? Go ahead, Mr. Tenazzo, and I'll circle back to the developers.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to council. We also do have site plan control. Again, it's going to depend on where this project lies with IASO and whether these are exempt from municipal approvals. And that's an answer that unfortunately I don't have at this point in time.
Can I ask you why? Why wouldn't you have that answer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I know that renewable projects are, were exempted and the province made the decision to exempt those types of projects. Unfortunately, I don't have the answer. I know that in this case, utility projects that tie to the grid as opposed to that are accessory to use, and my understanding that this would tie to the grid, they are, we do permit them in all zones. And generally, our practice has been to waive site plan control for those types of uses. So that has been our general practice. But that's not to say that we might not have the ability to do that. Unfortunately, I just don't have the answer right now.
It sounded like somebody from the developing companies or the group of development companies was looking to speak, but you had a lot of static. Was somebody looking to say something?
Yes, it's Rob. Yeah, it's Rob Kolbeck. I apologize for interrupting, Mr. Mayor. There is a, there's two portions of kind of resolutions that we're looking for. This initial one is a broader resolution just in support of the project. The IASO as part of the RFP does require us to approach city council again if the initial resolution doesn't cover all of the sections that they're looking for. So there is a requirement in the draft RFP that does state that we do require your, we do require a resolution in support of the zone and the other requirements, easement requirements and everything like that. So where is the the Green Energy Act and some of the state programs did not? This one will require that, that form of resolution.
So your audio?
The.
Your audio was very unclear on this end. So if I'm understanding you correctly, what you're saying is there are two IASO requirements, one that you're here for today, which is a notional endorsement of the project. But there's a second one that will make you come back to get more details approved? Is that what you're suggesting?
The first, and I apologize, I'm.
I don't know that you're in a location that lends itself to.
Yeah, Rob, I think we've.
With the breakup.
Can I have someone else answer these questions? Is that possible?
Yeah, I think, yeah, what Rob is saying is there's actually two two levels and there's an ultimate requirement by the IASO for detailed approval by the municipality. So including rights of way and all of the details. So yes, I think, I think what would be acceptable at this point is conceptual endorsement subject to final approval by council of a site plan. And if that's what you wanted to put in endorsement, I think that would be sufficient at this time.
Well, I think it's a very different ask of council. If you're asking for a conceptual endorsement of the idea so you can move forward, but council clearly recognizes or council is clearly assured that there's a secondary plan with details that come back to council for a final endorsement.
Yeah, so I think, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think.
No, no, you go ahead, but the director of planning was nodding to me, so go ahead and then I'll move to him.
Yeah, I think it would work fine. And a motion that said, you know, you support the project subject to final approval of a detailed site plan would be perfectly acceptable at this point. subject to final approval of a detailed site plan would be perfectly acceptable at this point.
Mr. Tenazzo, are you looking to speak?
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Mayor, and my apologies. Certainly, there are certainly a number of staff level approvals that would be required here, but I'm just not sure that there legally would be any council level approvals that may be required. So there's certainly the permitting process, the municipal consent processes, committee of adjustment approvals, but I'm not sure that there would be future council approvals per se at this point in time.
It sounds like the IESO might have one, you know, required, so it would be, I think, advisable if staff were able to confirm that. So if, if the project had to return to council in a detailed form for council's approval, then council would have the opportunity to assess it, you know, more clearly and give their approval or not at that time. Did you want to add to that, Mr. May?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would say this. I think what the IESO, the reason the IESO is doing this in these two stages and they've, you know, they are really focused on projects that can be online by 20, by 2025 or 2026 at the latest. And, and so what they're trying to, to weed out in the front end are projects that are just absolutely opposed by, by a local municipality and is likely to get very bogged down. And so if this was a project that under no circumstances you could support, the, the IESO is really looking for this to weed those outs because they don't want a bunch of projects in that are just not viable projects that are going to tie them up. So I think they have, they have split this into this two-stage thing. They're not, they've specifically not bypassed the more detailed approval because it's too early to do all of that. They're just trying to weed out projects that would be a non-starter.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. Counsel D4, is that the extent of your comments or questions?
Yeah, so just for clarity, Mr. Mayor, it sounds like what staff is saying is that this could potentially be the last political decision point for this project. But what the developer is saying is that the IESO would likely have a further political decision point where the project can move forward.
Well, yeah, what, what, what staff is saying is they're not certain that that's the case. What the developer is saying is that IESO has a requirement that it come back for a final council.
Could we potentially defer? Decision, resolution until we had an answer?
Well, no, we had, yeah, well, you're deferring then into, into December.
Okay.
So, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just add to that, that I, I think a, a motion, if you wanted to pass a motion of support that was subject to the council fine, doing final approval of a site plan, I think that would be, so I think that would be sufficient for our, for our needs at this point.
Yeah, well, we're still on the matter and it's still before us. So, so are you done with your questions, Counsel D4? Counselor Hillsinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To whomever is the appropriate person to answer this question, do you have any written letters or verbal confirmations of support from other entities that would, you know, participate or benefit from this or anything like the, like the Public Utilities Commission or any such other organizations or entities?
We certainly have endorsements and this is not the only project we're looking at. We have endorsements in other projects. Paul, I think, have you spoken to the PUC? I know, I think we've had, we had initial positive feedback on some of these, but I'll defer to Paul. Paul Veldman?
Yeah, we've had some conversations, obviously, to not put the cart before the horse. We went together here seeking this enforcement and then following with discussions in terms of EDC. We've had some conversations with our neighbors on the other side, being the Steel Mill, which has its sort of support that happens. Says, we came to council here seeking its enforcement and then went through the course of the next months to come, built our case as we moved to submitting, as Mr. May said, in, in December. And I would say, just to add to Tom's earlier point and Mr. Shoemaker's point, being that we would sort of accept a caveat, perhaps we could also provide Mr. Shoemaker comfort that we're going to actually do as we said, which is to ensure the safety of the buildings and continue with that cleanup over months to come. So I hope that answers your question. That will be part of our follow-up in months to come and initial conversations happen in them.
Can we pull over up here?
Counselor Hillsinger, does that add to your question?
They lost me a while ago.
He just muted himself, he wasn't speaking.
Yeah. Okay, so for clarification, there's no positive or like confirmed initial support of any kind that you can direct us to, to give us some comfort or some, you know, understanding that, that other folks in the industry are, are, are supportive of this idea?
Paul?
Sorry, was that directed at me again?
Yes.
The, the firm answer would be no, Counselor Hillsinger. However, I would point out, having previously endorsed a company that was proposing a similar, or actually bidding into the exact same program we are participating in. I think some couple of months ago, I, I think that I came for council as well.
And I, I will add to that, the, the IESO, there was a couple of things. One, the IESO separated this into two phases. They did a request for qualifications. And we have already run through that hurdle. They had a fairly rigorous criteria for experience qualifications and, and also they, on, on, for what they termed the expedited for projects to be on by, online by 2025 or 2026, you had outlined the projects. So on a formal basis, we were, we were approved and, and a number of large players were not approved. We were approved to meet that, those qualifications. Secondly, in our informal discussions with the IESO grid operations people to look at sites, we did some initial screening with them because obviously we don't want to spend a lot of time and effort doing, developing at sites that the, that the IESO doesn't see as valuable from a system operations and a grid operations perspective. And they encouraged us strongly to, to, to do all the, the sites we were looking at. We also engaged a third-party independent transmission engineer to do injection analysis. And, and actually that came back very positive for the Sault Ste. Marie site as being, having a, a large capacity or a large need for injection in this area. And then as Rob Kolbeck mentioned earlier, I think the, or maybe I did, the IESO has, has recently put additional emphasis on projects in the Northeast and needing additional supply to be located in the Northeast to facilitate the build-out of the mining and other loads that they're actually, the industrial loads they're anticipating here over the next few years.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask before I go to Counsel Veselalan, is there a date upon which you need to, to make this next submission to IESO?
The, so I believe the submission date to the IESO is in December. And so it's really because of the municipal elections and losing council meetings. That's, that's actually why we're, we're here now and not a month or six weeks from now. But we, it, it would really be, our next submission is due in December when the RFP submission is due.
Okay, so it's due in December?
Yeah, and again, you, you know, that, all of, even in December, all of the permitting and the IESO is not expecting all of those permits to be, and so it's all subject to the final permitting.
Counsel Veselalan?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to whomever. I think it would have been very useful if attached to this was the actual requirements in the RFP from the IESO. So we're taking your word that this is what you need in the resolution. However, without any letters of endorsements from other partners that are pertinent to this project, including the, the mill people, including PUC, including Hydro One, I mean, we're, we're just going by your words. So without having any sort of letters of endorsements or potential needs or partnerships, I really have difficulty in endorsing this as well, without having those details that you say that the IESO has. We don't have a copy of that RFP. So the only thing that I would be willing to move tonight, which comes to us quite often when people apply for funding or permits, is now be it resolved that the city, the council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie supports the application, but not the construction and operation. Those are two totally completely different things. And we endorse applications from all types of organizations that normally come quite well prepared with, with project partners and letters. So that is what I'm willing to do. And other than that, I, I would want this to be deferred because I, I don't think that there's enough information for us to make an adequate decision for this community.
So thank you very much, Counsel Veselalan. Mr. Ver, before I go to the next speaker on my list here, I mean, there's no staff report here. Staff have an opinion on this or does staff have a perspective on this that, that can inform council in some way?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council, I think, from our perspective, similar to the Evolution project that came here, our perspective was this is a, you know, very early stage for these applications. It has to go obviously to the IESO now through this application process and then would come back for further review in terms of the detailed plans for these types of projects. I think overall, certainly these projects align with the, the goal of the city to have clean technology at the forefront and also we believe, you know, can help to support our grid and the capacity of our grid. So in general, we think those would be positive developments for the community.
Yeah, and I think in general, council's always been apt to support these type of projects. And I think it's been indicated by the developers that we have supported one recently. That's true. I, I think the sensitivity here is the location of the project. But I think that, that the impasse maybe today that we're having is that we're hearing from the developers that there's another decision point for council beyond today. I think that would give council a lot of comfort, knowing that this wasn't a final decision point. But we're not getting that same comfort with respect from staff, right? We're not hearing that clearly from staff, that there's another council-level decision point. And I think that's where council's hung up. If council knew there was another council-level decision point with more detail, my sense is council would probably support this so the project can move along and they can develop it further and be back here. But we're, we're not getting that, that confidence from staff. And I don't think council's in a position to rely on the developer representations in that respect. So I, I just want to articulate what I see as, as, you know, the, the problem in the group or as identified. I'm seeing a lot of nodding hands amongst my colleagues, so I think I've accurately identified it. So I, I, I think for, for council to move forward, they need some assurance from staff that, yes, this will be back here. And, and if that's the case, then I think if we're having the discussion in that context, the discussion changes a lot.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I might, we would be happy to provide to staff and to, to council and yourself the detailed RFP that specifies that stuff from the IESO. That's one point. Secondly, I think as, as I suggested early, earlier, I think a, a motion that endorsed the application subject to the council being able to review and approve a detailed site plan would be acceptable at this point. Then I think I would hope would address, we understand your concerns. And quite frankly, you can tell from our, from our presentation, we have tried to, to actually focus this proposal around as a catalyst to actually do good things on that property because we think, we recognize that that's a sensitive site for the city. And so that's actually our intent and that's been BMI's, you know, history and DNA. But, but I understand, you know, you, it, it's not reasonable for you guys to just take our word for it. A motion that was subject still to final approval of a site plan would be, I think, acceptable and serve our purposes. And secondly, we would be happy to, to provide all of the detailed IESO requirements and highlight where those requirements bring us back to you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go back to Mr. Ver and I've asked the CEO to look at the motion in consideration and context of what I, what I've said to, to offer some language, but I'm going to go back to Mr. Ver for.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council, I was discussing with our director of planning and I'll let Peter actually speak to it, which is in alignment with what the developers were just proposing.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council. The property is subject to site plan control. Section 41 would allow council. Now traditionally, that's been a staff decision. But having said that, I, I, I think council, if, if it gave council more comfort, you could put in the resolution that council would like to be the approval body or the approval authority for that site plan agreement, which would be a detailed review of all of the exterior portions of the development.
Okay, so, so we have the clerk and the CEO looking at that. What I'm going to do in the meantime is I'm going to continue down my list because we've only got three more minutes to consent. So at five, sorry, not consent, I apologize, to planning. So at 5:30, we're going to move to planning and if we don't have a decision on this by then, which I don't expect we will, we'll come back to it immediately after planning. Counsel Hollingsworth, you're the next speaker on my list.
Thank you. I have several questions that probably will take more than the two minutes, three minutes.
Can you ask one short one in the, the next three minutes and then we'll come back to you when I, when I come back?
Please do come back to me.
I will start with you.
Well, yes, I'm curious to know through you, your worship to the developers, your funding sources. The first question before we dive into funding sources is give me some more history of the different companies, especially the, is it BioVeld? How long has this company been around for? I think it's BioVeld, Veld, is that after BioVeldman by chance?
No, it's, it's BioVeld Energy and BioVeld Energy was actually formed this past year specifically with BMI to focus on power developments. I think the two entities that are more meaningful for you are SB Energy, who is the developer and the financial backer of this project. And I'll let Jackson Salavera walk you through the background of that and the financing capability. And then we can, and then Paul Veldman, who's managing partner with BMI can speak to their, their history. But Jackson, do you want to speak to SB Energy?
Sure, this is Jackson Salavara, the PP of Strategy and Investments at SB Energy. Thanks to the mayor and council for the opportunity to speak with you today. SB Energy is a utility-scale solar and storage developer-owner-operator. We're based in California. We take projects, solar and battery storage projects from the earliest stages of development through construction and then operate the projects ourselves and are the long-term owners. So we own 100% of the equity in our projects. We are backed by two main investors, Aries Management Corporation, a US-based infrastructure private equity firm and Soft, the SoftBank Group, a Japanese multinational. We, on our projects are traditionally have that equity stake, but also raise project finance, project debt against the, the CapEx of the project and then are paying off that project debt over the course of the project operations.
I, I think it's fair, it's fair to say when you applied to get through the first gate of IESO, you had to establish that you had the financing to complete the project. Is that correct?
The eligibility was more around project experience such that that financing capability was implicit and that we'd brought projects to successful commercial operations.
Thank you. Counsel Hollingsworth, I will start with you. Gentlemen, I appreciate your time. In Ontario, we, we, as many of you will know, we have a Planning Act that requires us to do our planning at a specified time. So our planning applications occur at 5:30. So what we're going to do is we're going to stand this matter down until we're done our planning applications and we'll resume this matter immediately when that's over. In the meantime, the clerk and the CEO are working on amending the motion for council's considerations based on comments that we received from council as the discussion has been ongoing. Madam Clerk, if we can move to the planning agenda? Yeah?
In, in the one minute before planning actually has to start. I don't know if it's, if it's of any help to, to staff, it probably isn't. But if, if there weren't going to be an amended motion, I was going to move that this be deferred because I understand they're under timelines, but nobody, I, I want, I want a staff report on what the requirements are.
So that's not, that's not a procedural question. Like, we'll, we'll come back to this after 5:30 and then I'll, I'll go to Counsel Hollingsworth and then if you want to, if someone wants to move a deferral, we'll deal with the deferral at that point. So Madam Clerk, if we can start the.
Agenda item 8.7.1, A922ZOP, 130 Wellington Street East. A motion by Counsel Scott.
A motion by Councilor Scott Avezo Allen resolved that the report of the planner dated September 19, 2022 concerning application A922ZOP be received and that council approved this application in the following manner. That council approve official plan amendment 243T159 by redesignating the western 155 meters of 130 Wellington Street East from institutional to commercial with the following amendments to one notwithstanding housing policy HO-6 to waive the requirement that in all urban residential developments greater than 50 units, at least 30% of those units shall be affordable. Two, notwithstanding commercial policy C.2 to waive the requirement that new commercial development in excess of 4,000 square meters conduct a market impact study to assess the impact on existing facilities. That council rezone the western 155 meters of 130 Wellington Street East from institutional zone with a special exception to general commercial zone with an amended repeal and replace special exception two. In addition to the uses permitted in a general commercial zone, one, permit residential dwellings to be located on the ground floor. Two, reduce the required parking for residential units from 1.25 spaces per unit to one space per unit. Three, permit the following additional uses within the C4 zone. Computer, precision and electronics manufacturer and repair group homes and group residences. Four, reduce the required landscaping in the required front yard, Tancred, from 50% to 5% and to reduce the required landscaping in the required exterior side yard, Wellington, from 50% to 20%, inclusive of the six meters, six meter required road widening along Wellington Street East. Five, notwithstanding section six, permit the required three loading spaces to be located in a required front yard, occupy required parking spaces and not be visually screened from abiding and adjacent residential zones. Six, limit the number of residential dwelling units and square area of non-residential uses to a limit where the peak sanitary flows generated from the site do not exceed 9.34 liters per second, calculated in accordance with the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks Design Guidelines. Seven, as part of the conditions of site plan approval, the owner shall include vibration warning clauses within any agreements of purchase and sale or tenant lease agreements for the proposed residential and non-residential units to the satisfaction of the planning director. Eight, as part of the conditions of site plan approval, the owner shall construct noise mitigating measures to the satisfaction of the planning director.
Okay, I'm going to come to you, Mr. Tenazzo. Give us an synopsis of the application, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The subject property is the former Lakeway Tech, later St. Mary's College High School. And more recently, it's, it's operating as the tech, which is a mixture of commercial and institutional uses. In this case, the rezoning only applies to the western portion of the property. So the field is excluded. And essentially the existing building and surrounding paved areas or parking areas are included. The, the major point here is the applicant is looking to add up to 220 dwelling units. So adding residential as, as an additional permitted use. Because of the number of dwelling units, certainly a waiver is required to the current affordable housing policies of the official plan. Up to this point, staff has not received any comments formal or informal as a result of the, the public consultation. And the recommendation is to approve. And I believe Mr. Varani is here should council have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Varani is here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Varani, do you want to make any representations to council? Sir, if you could, could you please come to the microphone? And we'll turn the microphone off on for you. So we've met a number of times and it's, it's been my pleasure. And I thank you for the investments you've made in our community. But if you could identify yourself for the record, for the folks watching at home, and then you can give your representations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council and the staff. It's my pleasure to be here, Pharaohs Varani. We own the tech building. And we are trying to rejuvenate that building that has been there for a little while. And we are trying to make it work a little bit better for the community and for ourselves. We are trying to make it as best as we can. And we really appreciate all your help and support. You have, you guys have been great. We have been dealing with you for over three years now. And I have nothing but thanks to all of you.
Okay. So are there any other parties here that are here to speak in favor of the application? Are there any other parties here that wish to speak to the application or in opposition to the application? Mr. Varani, if you can have a seat, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, you're welcome to attend the microphone. You just identify, I mean, you're familiar to all of us, but if you could identify yourself to all the folks watching at home and then just you have a few minutes to outline what your representations are.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to say thank you personally for all your service and hard work over the last term and the previous term, Mr. Mayor, and also to all council members. Again, for your service and your hard work and what you believe to be in the best interests of the community. So to begin, the developer, as all developers must, on this 220 unit housing project, must include at least 30% or 66 affordable housing units. I mean, that's a requirement of our official plan. There's no wiggle, wiggle room in it. Let me read you the requirement verbatim from the official plan. For all urban residential developments greater than 50 units, the developer shall be required to provide a statement of affordability, ensuring that opportunities for creating a range of housing types are provided so that no less than 30% of the new dwellings are affordable. And wherever feasible, 50% of all affordable housing provided shall be affordable to low-income households as defined by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Affordable housing as defined in the Planning Act and Provincial Policy Statement, which as the Director of Planning will tell you, means a specific price. Say 900 bucks for a one bedroom and a different specific price, say $980 for a two bedroom. And also, and also depending on some information from the renter or, or the owner. You know, prices, these are prices that seniors on fixed incomes who want to downsize can afford. Or those youngish two-parent families with two entry-level incomes and with a child or two can afford. Those are the types of people we're talking about when we're talking about developing affordable housing. We're not talking about subsistence type pricing. Seniors and youngish two-income families. So how is it that our planning department is recommending to council that 30% affordable housing requirement be waived when we are in the midst of an affordable housing crisis? Well, the planner recommends to council that the developer doesn't have to offer any affordable housing units because it might cause the developer to scale back their development to less than 50 units, where 30% of the units are not required by our official plan to be affordable. Fair enough, but there are two problems with that sort of crystal ball gazing. The first and most important is that rather than just say to a developer, yeah, you can, you can develop unaffordable housing, all completely 100%. They should really be looking at drafting our next official plan to say that any housing development of four or more units should be 30% affordable. It should reduce the requirement from 50 to four so that we're getting both market rents and we're getting affordable rents. Because quite frankly, we have a need of both. And to ignore one in place of the other is just, you know, the simple truth of the matter is we want developers who want to participate and contribute to the betterment of our community by developing both affordable and market rent units in their development, no matter how big or how small, in order to conquer the massive lack of both market rent and affordable housing stock in our city. Because making crystal ball predictions about what a developer will or will not do if told by planning staff that the planning department cannot recommend waiving the rock-solid, crystal-clear official plan requirement to provide 30% in their developments, which are bigger than 50 units of affordable units. That's not a planning reason to abandon 66 seniors and/or new families from having the opportunity to rent affordable units in this case. And because it's not a planning reason, I will appeal each and every one of these decisions where the planning departments abandoned citizens who require a chance at new affordable housing. As a last note, the planner's report says in this recommendation, this recommendation supports this development because it avoids development and land use patterns which may cause environmental or public health and safety concerns. This just isn't true. It makes the health and safety of Siouxites who are desperately looking for affordable housing worse, ignoring their needs and making it less safe and less healthy for them to live in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are there any other parties present that are interested in making any representations with respect to this application? Seeing that, I'm going to move to council. Council, do we have any questions of either our staff or of the applicants? We'll start with Council Shoemaker. Go to Council Hollingsworth. I'm taking a list now because everybody's hands going up. Council Shoemaker, you can start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Tenazzo. I know we discussed this, that some length, a meeting or two ago. But since that requirement was built into the official, well, how about this? What year was that requirement built into the official plan for anything over 50 units to have 30% of affordable units?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Councilor Shoemaker, that was in 1996.
And why was it included in our official plan at that time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there, there was a short-lived, under the Ray government, there was a short-lived requirement that essentially required inclusionary zoning to be built into official plans. It was very short-lived and, and one could argue that at that time in 1996, given the local economy, that it may not have been actually much of a stretch to, to achieve that. Really, that's, our, our rents likely were affordable at that time. It, it was fairly short-lived. We're the only municipality that hasn't left in our official plan. We, we are working towards changing that. I will agree that it is broken and ultimately at the end of the day, that's not to say, you know, you can regulate the requirement of affordable housing. And I agree with Mr. Brown that when I say affordable housing for planning purposes, we mean that missing middle. You can regulate that, but there also has to be some form of incentive in order to make that work. Otherwise, from what we're hearing and given costs today, it becomes cost prohibitive for developers to be able to achieve that, at which point you get no housing built. And that's not productive either.
And thanks for that. That's, that's good explanation. When was that requirement removed from the Planning Act?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it, it was never actually in the Planning Act. It was part of a, a set of policies that, that were fairly short-lived, probably in the mid 90s. It was over a very short period that it was, it was actually required. And the city's official plan at that time just happened to be within that window.
So if it was, if it was in the mid to late 90s, would it be fair to say that it hasn't been a provincial requirement for at least 22 years since the return of the millennium?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Council Shoemaker. In, in that current form, absolutely. It, it certainly speaks to inclusionary zoning, which is supported, but not, not required. So, so the concept was workable, but the manner in which it was drafted and the form in which it was drafted, just put into the official plan with, with no other policies or incentives around it, no implementation measures in a zoning bylaw, has just proved to be unworkable.
And how long have you been at the city?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, since 2003.
So since 2003, how many times has this policy been enforced, this official plan requirement?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's certainly come to the forefront in, in more recent years as we're seeing larger rental projects. I think we went for a lot of years where there, there either were no rental projects or they were very small scale. So I would suggest it's certainly coming into a force, I would think around half a dozen times in the last five years.
Half a dozen times we've required developers to meet this requirement?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's been waived by council.
Every time?
Yeah.
Okay. And you're recommending to waive it tonight as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's the recommendation.
Okay. My only other question is for Mr. Varani. And the question is if, if you were required to include 30% of these units as affordable units, how many units would you be seeking to have built in the tech?
None. My apologies. But it's so cost prohibitive under current economic situations that it's almost impossible to even think about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Shoemaker. Council Hollingsworth.
Thank you. And then my questions were asked, so we're just down to two. Through you, your worship to Peter, Mr. White. Can you comment on, are there any other current projects going on that are affordable housing projects? Are there any other current projects in our community that are happening right now?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Council Hollingsworth, there's a number. I would suggest the two biggest would be the Cara Trinity Tower at the corner of Northern Avenue and, and Great Northern Road. And then the New Sioux Legion Building also has affordable components built into it up on Great Northern Road. So those would be the two bigger ones that I could certainly name off right now.
Okay. And by chance, are you able to give us a ballpark idea how many units those two projects would provide in affordable housing? Just a ballpark?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Hollingsworth, over 150 units across the two of them, at least, yes.
Okay. And Council Shoemaker touched on this, but can you elaborate again? A few meetings ago, I believe we did do a resolution that we are going to revisit this 30% rule. Can you just again elaborate on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Council Hollingsworth. So for council's December meeting, which I believe would be the first working meeting of new council, we will be bringing a report to council where we're going to recommend that Housing Task Force to be established to take a hard look at, you know, that level of incentive as well as potential, you know, potentially that level of incentive and potentially that level of regulation to, to, to balance those two out to, to try to achieve more affordable units, again, aimed at the missing middle.
Okay. So based on that report that's coming back to us, which we as council asked for, it sounds like we as council are concerned about affordable housing and we do want to look harder at this. Would you agree?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I would agree.
Okay. And thank you. That's all.
For clarification, Mr. Tenazzo indicated that the December meeting was the first working meeting of the new council. I don't think that's correct. I think the November 21st meeting will be the first business meeting of the new council.
That's correct.
Those, that's it for your comments, Council Hollingsworth? Councilor Vezel Allen?
Thank you. My first question is for Mr. Tenazzo. Peter, for the, the landscaping that's going from 50% to 5%, is that in the, I would call like sort of like your front entrance area where you have like the large green space and, and the signage and all of that for, now what is going to be there? Is that just going to be strictly parking spaces?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Councilor Vezel Allen. So that landscape reduction simply legalizes what's there now. My understanding in speaking with the applicant is that he has no plans to exchange or to, to alter that sort of southwest corner, if you will, the Wellington Street frontage and the Tancred frontage. So that, that reduction simply legalizes what's there now.
But potentially there could be parking spaces put in there if, if required. This, this is what I'm, I'm going at is, is if it gets reduced, because right now there is a buffer from those people that are living across the street because you have the, the yard and you can put trees there and that sort of thing. So that's my concern is, you know, number one, buffer for the neighbors that are there. And number two, increase traffic in the area because I've noticed a traffic study is not included in this, in this rezoning.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So part of, part of the approvals was to also reduce the parking requirements and the calculation was done so that at its full build-out as currently contemplated, there's enough parking, there's a surplus of parking actually around the site without having to encroach into any of the landscaping or buffering.
Okay, okay. My next question is for Mr. Varani. You'll have to come up to the mic. Sorry. In terms of the units that you are going to be putting in, how many are going to be completely barrier-free? So we have a lot of seniors in our, our community that are dealing with, you know, walkers and assistive devices. and assistive devices. So how many of your units are going to be like the full-on barrier-free? So you've got the walk-in shower and that sort of thing?
I guess the requirement, the minimum requirement is around ten percent. That's my understanding, but I guess we'll be going beyond that.
So, and what is your target market for the units that you are, um, putting in?
It's a combination of everything. We are having one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, uh, and a couple of bachelors, uh, and we are looking at the community.
So it's going to be a mixed use and, and on average, um, what do you think your rents are going to be?
The rents?
Mm-hmm.
We have at this time, no idea. We are working on it, but I think based on the current things, it would be anywhere from twelve hundred dollars and up.
And would that be everything included? So not like heat and PUC or? I'm just trying to get a sense because we, we know what is sort of at that affordable threshold and, and knowing the neighborhood that you're going into. So, um, you know, you take a look at Campbell Place, um, a one-bedroom, everything included, you know, not your internet and your cable and that sort of thing is running around twelve hundred dollars. So that's kind of where I'm trying to get the sense of, of where you're at.
Uh, based on the current economic situations, anything that was built even five years back is a very different than what it is, what it's going to be costing us today. Uh, you guys, all of you are more familiar with and more, more aware of what, what it's costing us, uh, to build anything today. So we are not really sure as to how we can handle that kind of, uh, rent, even, even at the, the rents that we are talking about, twelve hundred and up. This is not really very financially lucrative projects. It has to be very substantially higher, the rent, et cetera, but at this time, we do not know what it could be.
And my last question would be currently, how many commercial tenants do you have in your space?
Maybe six.
Six? And you had the movie being filmed there too as well?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Verani.
Thank you so much.
Council Dufour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my questions through you to, uh, Mr. Tenazo. Mr. Tenazo, um, seeing in this report, it looks like, um, we have similar sanitary capacity issues to, um, our last major rezoning. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Dufour, there, there happens to be, it would appear that there's, it's about a hundred meter section of, of sanitary pipe that's undersized and, and you could call that's a little bit of a, that's the limiting factor for the residential development here or the overall development of the property. I believe it's, uh, limits the entire site to, I believe it's ten liters per second in terms of sanitary flow.
Okay. Um, it, is this, uh, a limit to only this site or will it be a limit to future development in the area as well?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Dufour, it certainly would, would potentially at, at its present state, limit the, the development of the eastern half of the property, which is currently vacant. Um, certainly it could potentially, um, have impacts for possible intensification, although, uh, the area is largely built out because it is in our core, uh, but, but it could, it could be, it certainly is a limiting factor for the eastern half of the property, uh, and, and could have, present some barriers to, uh, intensification.
Okay. Um, my next question is for, uh, actually I'll finish with Mr. Tenazo. Um, so Mr. Tenazo, will city staff in the future be bringing, uh, future councils any sorts of, uh, plans for how to upgrade infrastructure in situations like this where the infrastructure is acting as, uh, a very real and physical impediment to growth?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and I believe the Director of Engineering may also be able to answer, uh, in more detail here, but certainly, uh, you know, in this case, the applicants really did have a choice. Either you, you sort of put a limit on the development, uh, or, you know, the applicant could also pay to upgrade that service or, or upgrade that pipe or things like development charges potentially could be used to upgrade, uh, that pipe, which would then allow for, for greater development. So there, there are a couple of options here in terms of how this could be handled going forward.
Okay.
I, I think what he's asking you is just, just city staff plan to bring forward any of those options in the future to be pointed. That's, that's what he's asking. You go ahead, Mr. Rumio. We can have Carl's mic, please? No one? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, to Council Dufour, specifically, uh, speaking about wastewater and sanitary sewage, we, we are starting a wastewater master plan, which is going to identify spots like this, pinch points in the system that, that need to be identified through, to allow for future development. And we will be bringing that to, to council through capital, uh, projects.
Okay. Thank you. Is that satisfying in your question, Council Dufour?
Yeah. And to that point, I, I think that's a really important thing for, uh, the city to be doing rather than doing these things on kind of an ad hoc basis and limiting development when development is looking to be built. I think having a, as much of that information and, and as much of a plan in order to deal with these kinds of situations ahead of time, um, really serves, uh, not just us, but the whole city very well. So thank you, Mr. Tenazo and, uh, Mr. Rumio. Um, my last question is for Mr. Verani. Um, Mr. Verani, thank you very much for coming. Um, in the future, do you envision, um, wanting to add further intensification or development to the eastern portion of that property?
Uh, not in the near future, not in the immediate future.
Okay. Um, potentially at some point or?
Sure. There is space available and, uh, that could potentially be used, yes.
Okay. Thanks. Much appreciated. That's all my questions.
Council Hillsinger?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Verani. Could you kindly not run away?
Yeah, perhaps you don't run away every time, sir. And just have, have a seat right on the bench, right behind the microphone would probably be the easiest thing for you to do.
Thank you. Um, should this, um, application be approved this evening? Could you help us understand, um, in terms of your business plan, um, what, what are your timelines or, uh, or project timelines in order to accomplish, um, uh, what you're hoping to do here?
At this time, we are planning to implement the project in two phases. The first one would be, uh, a hundred units, uh, by converting the existing buildings, uh, portions of the existing buildings into apartments. And in phase two, we will be, we are thinking about demolishing the middle portion of the buildings, the, the school, and create two towers of sixty units each.
Okay. And what's the timeline for that? Like, can you, can you help us understand when this all would come to fruition?
The first phase, we are hoping to start soon and be completed within the next eighteen months or so, and the phase two will be starting after that.
Okay. So completely the entire project with the sixty, if I'm remembering properly, the sixty, the hundred units plus the towers in the center, when, when do you foresee being completed, um, with your plan?
Between, between three and five years.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes.
Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, all my questions have been asked.
That's not a misfortune. It's good fortune. Council, do you have any more questions or comments? Uh, for my part, I appreciate the development. I think it's important to add more, add into the residential, uh, practices in our community. And one of the things we've, and as I say, which is very clear in this town, where we are, where we are right now, has been lack of housing, is that there were a lot of years when we didn't see development. Uh, and you have proportion enough to see a hundred, thirty units we put in front of this council, that this council has approved hundreds of units, but we need to see the units grow. Um, so I, I certainly, I think positive development, not going to speak at length to the, to, we are about thirty percent, because I've been before this council a number of times, going to get that with growing, and the council term, we will be addressed. I mean, meantime, one of the things that's going to help before build, that's unity access, and the nice unity access to housing is building, it's wonderful. And appreciate that they have to make, do that with Verani. Uh, it's nice to be with you every time that I have dealt with you. Uh, and I know from certain staff, every time you were in the team, you've been asked to do something, I think you've been responsive, right? That's the kind of development that we like to see and heard, and we appreciate that responsiveness. So I certainly am happy to support the application and we'll call it, hold on it, nine and third.
It is open for voting?
Application is open, voting. Call in favor. Application is carried, may I ask? Thank you for your time.
It's council, thanks staff. I, I have been very fortunate to have, uh, an opportunity to work in this, uh, town and the city, and I have had excellent, excellent help and support from every member of, uh, the staff particularly. I haven't had an opportunity to speak to or meet with the councillors as much, with the exception of the two who are in my ward or our areas. Uh, but I'm looking forward to seeing all of you, meeting with you and, uh, working with you all in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
So does that bring us to eight point seven point two nine and third?
It does. A eleven twenty-two Z, short-term rental accommodation. A motion by councillors Gardi and Dufour resolved that the report of the Director of Planning dated September nineteen twenty twenty-two concerning A eleven twenty-two Z be received and that council one amends zoning bylaw two thousand five one fifty in the following manner. One, that short-term rentals be defined as any accommodation that is available for up to twenty-eight consecutive days. Two, that short-term rentals be permitted in all zones that permit a residential dwelling, more specifically rural area zone, rural aggregate extraction zone, estate residential zone, single detached residential zone, low-density residential zone, medium-density residential zone, high-density residential zone, traditional commercial zone, central commercial zone, commercial transitional zone, riverfront zone, general commercial zone. Three, that only one self-contained short-term rental is permitted per lot except where the property is within a commercial zone that permits dwelling units, more specifically the following commercial zones, traditional commercial zone, central commercial zone, commercial transitional zone, riverfront zone, general commercial zone. Four, where on the day of passing of this bylaw, more than one short-term rental existed on one lot, such short-term rentals may continue to lawfully exist. Five, where multiple units exist within a condominium, written approval from the condominium corporation is required. Six, that recreational vehicles and tents cannot be utilized as short-term rentals. Seven, that short-term rentals hold a valid license from the city. Hotels and bed and breakfasts are excluded from this requirement. Proposed licensing bylaw and requirements. One, applicants will be required to fill out the application form and pay applicable fees. Two licenses will be valid for up to three years upon which renewals would be required. Three licenses are not transferable. The applicant will be responsible for obtaining written approvals from the following city departments. Building Division will conduct a file review and if required, an onsite inspection to ensure applicable zoning property standards and Ontario Building Code compliance. Two, Fire Services will conduct an onsite inspection to ensure applicable Ontario Fire Code compliance. Three, Finance Division to confirm that municipal accommodation tax return forms have been completed. The following licensing guidelines aim to provide additional resources to guests and neighbors so that potential problems can be avoided and if problems arise, they can be addressed. Hosts should clearly post a set of house rules for guests, including, but not limited to, clear communication of property boundaries and what amenities are available to guests and what amenities are not. Reference to pertinent information and local bylaws, such as the noise bylaw and animal care and control bylaw. General information relating to being a good neighbor, as per the city's Be a Good Neighbor Guide, and rules around refuse disposal. Hosts should also provide their contact information as well as information to contact the short-term rental platform, for example, Airbnb, to immediate neighbors so that in the event of an issue, neighbors can contact the host and/or the short-term rental platform. Failure, failure to adhere to the aforementioned requirements may result in the refusal or revocation of a short-term rental license. The proposed licensing fees, subject to annual updates to the user fee bylaw, are as follows. Fifty dollars licensing fee payable to the Clerks Department, seventy-five, which is fifty plus twenty-five late licensing fee payable to the Clerks Department, sixty dollars and eighty-seven cents to a hundred and twenty-six dollars, twenty-seven cents, Building Division file review and/or onsite inspection fee payable to the Building Division, a hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents, Fire Services file review and onsite inspection fee. Additional fees may be applicable where re-inspections are required to address deficiencies.
So, okay. Thank you very much. Um, I'm clerk. So we have this before us. I'm going to come to you first, Mr. Tenazo, for a synopsis, uh, and then I'm going to go to, uh, there's a presentation on the agenda and I, I'm going to give, uh, the, the, the individual who put that presentation on the agenda an opportunity to speak to it and then we'll go from there. So, Mr. Tenazo, if you can give a synopsis of this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So short-term rentals or STRs, they're often referred to as Airbnbs and certainly in recent years, there's been a significant increase. Uh, they tend to operate in residential areas, uh, which can cause problems and be unsettling for neighbors and, and this really has prompted municipalities across the province of the country, for that matter, to, to start regulating them. Um, in the case of Sioux St. Marie, we, we really did start, uh, with more of a, a sort of common approach that we're seeing throughout the province. Um, but as a result of the public consultation, we, we sort of scaled it back a little bit. We removed, uh, the primary dwelling unit requirement so that an STR host, it did not have to be their primary dwelling, uh, which many municipalities across the province are requiring. Uh, and then we also removed sort of a max, uh, maximum number of nights, uh, like an, uh, essentially what they call a night cap. Um, and, and we removed those two restrictions really as a result of the public consultation. And, uh, uh, again, the, the number of complaints that we, we received over the past four years, uh, by and large, the majority of, of STRs are, are operating in an appropriate manner. So from the public consultation, the, the requirements that we were initially proposing, uh, we're going to put a lot of the STRs out of business. So, uh, this, this approach is somewhat scaled back. I think council can look at that, this as a bit of a stepped approach, uh, and that if, if problems do continue to arise or increase, staff can always go back and look at that. Uh, at this point in time, the recommendation again is to improve, uh, zoning regulations to, to again, um, zoning provisions to regulate Airbnbs or STRs and then a licensing regime, uh, aimed at, again, requiring STRs to hold a valid license and the conditions, uh, adhering to the conditions of that license. Uh, I believe there are a number of folks that may wish to speak to this matter that are in the audience and, and those are my submissions. Thank you.
Okay. So council, before I come to you, we will, we will take representations because it's a planning matter from the, the delegates who are here, present. Are there any parties here that wish to speak to this matter? There's a presentation on the agenda by Joe Provenceur. Am I saying that correctly? Or is Joe here tonight? Joe, did you want to, did you want to speak to her or did you want to just leave your presentation to speak for it? Okay. So just for the record, none of the parties, the parties that were here give an opportunity to speak to it. None of them have kind of taken that opportunity. We do have a presentation that's part of the public record from, uh, from Joe and I thank him for that. So, so, uh, council, we, we'll start with you. I'm going to start with Council Gardi, uh, because he is actually the, uh, I think mover on this resolution and, uh, was the, the party that, that, uh, brought the, the original motion that brought us to where we are today. Council Gardi?
Yeah. So thank you to staff for, for working on this the last, uh, well, we brought it forward with Council Scott and I think in twenty nineteen, and I'm, uh, glad that it got to us, back to us before, uh, this term ended. Um, I also want to thank those people who are, uh, in attendance and for Mr. Provenceur for, for providing the slides, uh, because the slide deck was, as you mentioned, pretty, pretty informative. Um, that said, um, I brought this forward because of some concerns that Council Scott and I had heard about recreational properties in Ward Five along the water. Um, since those initial, uh, conversations that I had in twenty nineteen, uh, and twenty twenty, I've subsequently had, you know, a, a few more people who live in close proximity to, to these types of properties, um, expressed their concern to me and I, I've met with a few of them, um, personally, uh, collectively, uh, in one of their homes and they, they spoke to me of the challenges. Um, it was my suggestion that, um, whatever we brought, whatever staff brought back include a minimum night stay in this, um, these parts of our, our community that are more recreational. Specifically, I was speaking to those, uh, along the water in, uh, the west, uh, end of the Sioux St. Marie. Um, so right now, I will say, um, I am not in favor of supporting what's before us for that. W- that, that sheer fact, I appreciate, um, this is a scaled back version and that staff took in, um, input from, from, uh, those in the community who, who are hosts. Um, I have one question to, to, to Mr. Tenazo, if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Tenazo. Um, in the public consultation, just so I have a, an idea, or, or at least you can jog my memory, in terms of those who, um, in terms of those who are neighbours of such hosts, was there any, was there any presence or information presented to you guys from those or was it predominantly the hosts that did?
Through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Gardie. So, during the formal consultation, it was exclusively hosts that showed up to our events, but informally, we certainly had conversations with neighbours and concerned, concerned neighbours that lived nearby as current STRs.
Sure. Thank you. So, all that being said, Mr Mayor, where I am is, and I'm probably looking for a little bit of direction, as this is before me, I'm not going to be supportive of it. That being said, if I wanted to kind of talk about the inclusion of that idea that I had, how could we proceed, if at all?
Okay, so you can simply vote against it, but if you're looking for the bylaw, if you're looking for the bylaw to be changed in any way, and if I understand you correctly, you're looking for a provision in the bylaw that actually limits, that has a minimum stay for short-term rentals that are on the water. Is that my understanding?
Correct.
So, what you'd have to do is refer that, and the CEO will correct me if he thinks I'm wrong about this, you'd have to refer the matter, you'd either have to amend that here and offer specifically what you wanted to see for council's consideration, if you had a seconder for that amendment, or you'd have to refer the matter back to staff with the direction that they include a provision that has a minimum night stay for waterfront property.
So, Mr Mayor, I could either deal, we could either deal with it now or we, if your council deals with it later.
Well, we do have a meeting left, although I'd prefer not to do any business at that meeting.
Right.
But it would be, it would probably come to the November twenty-first meeting because staff would have to work on it. But what you would be doing is referring it back to staff with a specific direction, which would be to include a minimum night stay for waterfront rentals. And if somebody seconded that, it was passed by council and the matter would end and be referred back to staff. If that wasn't the case and that didn't pass, we would ultimately just vote on the bylaw that's in front of us today.
Right.
So, did you want to refer the matter back to staff? Could you articulate the terms of that referral for me, please?
Essentially, what I would like to see included in this is no less than essentially fourteen day or thirteen night or whatever it would be stay at waterfront property along essentially the river in the west end of the community.
Well.
You get the gist. Can I articulate it specifically? No, but I think we've had these conversations. These guys know precisely what I've been looking for because I've been talking to them about them for the last three years. I appreciate it didn't come back. I want, I would prefer that, that, you know, a minimum of two weeks essentially.
So, let me just stop talking, councillor Gardie, let me try and articulate this for you.
Yeah, please.
You want to, you want, you're moving to refer the matter back to staff to include a provision in the bylaw that has a minimum night stay for any STRs that are waterfront properties?
Yep.
Was that, was what I said, recorded by either of the clerk or the CEO?
Kind of what you said initially.
Okay, so do we have a seconder for that referral? Councillor Bruni, councillor Bruni's willing to second that referral. So, we'll have a discussion on that referral. If it passes, the matter will be referred back to staff and returned on the November twenty-first meeting. If it doesn't pass, then we will deal with the main bylaw. So, councillor Gardie, do you have anything to add to your comments on the referral?
Well, it's just going to echo what I've said a couple, a few times when this is brought forward. Those types of properties lend themselves more to people using them as recreational properties. The people that I have spoke to who live in close proximity to them often find people coming and going other than the people who are the hosts. I appreciate that within what is in front of us, there is, you know, that they can't have other structures, tents, et cetera, on the property. I'm not so confident in those types of areas that we're going to have the necessary enforcement to ensure that that doesn't happen and that it might take a little bit longer than otherwise to get them taken care of and that, you know, I'm not going to repeat myself.
You are repeating yourself. So, councillor Bruni, do you have any comments on the referral?
No, I have a couple of questions if I can pass on to Mr Tenazzo. Is that possible?
Yeah, are we dealing with the referral of the matter or just on the main bylaw? I just want to deal with the referral right now.
No, that's fine. We'll speak on the referral.
Okay. Councillor Shoemaker?
Question on the referral through you, Mr Mayor, to Mr Tenazzo. The consideration of this proposed provision was undertaken by planning staff through this process, was it not?
Through you, Mr Mayor, yes. We did speak to that in the report and we're hopeful that the licensing regime is going to clear up some of these matters and some of these historical issues that have occurred out in the waterfront areas. So, again, we're hopeful that the licensing requirements is going to clean some of that up. I would also note that, you know, as we noted in the report, and this may seem, may seem, but you could ultimately be stuck with a bad neighbour for two weeks as well, right? So, you might get stuck with that potential bad guest for a longer period of time as well. So, that's possibly an unintended outcome of that.
Okay, thanks, Mr Tenazzo. So, if we referred it back for further review or consideration by staff, I suspect your, sorry, the referrals to return the bylaw with that amendment.
Okay. So, your opinion isn't going to change unless we direct you to change it, is my question. Through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. At this point in time, the, you know, the bylaw and the zoning bylaw does not recommend a minimum two-week stay for waterfront properties. However, if council were to return it, then we would come back with a bylaw of that effect and we would certainly have to explore the, you know, the legal ramifications of how we would go about regulating that and of course enforcing it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, councillor Hollingsworth on the referral.
Thank you. I can appreciate that you're talking about recreational, but we have to honestly say we have waterfront property that's not recreational, people just live there. So, having said that, I have, I struggle to support this change to the two weeks recreational waterfront. I think if we're going to do this, it has to be blanketed for the whole bylaw, so I won't be supporting this amendment.
Okay. And councillor Dufour?
Through you, Mr Mayor, to Mr Tenazzo. If council so chose, could we adopt the regime as recommended by staff and revisit the potential need for the two-week minimum one year after, having a licensing requirement to see if the problem behaviour corrected or not?
Council could choose to revisit the bylaw at any point.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Many other comments or questions on the referral? Can we have a vote on the referral, all in favour of the referral? Councillor Gardie and councillor Bruni opposed to the referral? Referral failed. So, now we're at the main motion. So, now we're on the main motion. So, councillor Gardie, I think you've spoken to it, so that you were the only person on my list. So, anybody else want to speak to the main motion? Councillor Hollingsworth? Councillor Bruni? Yeah, after councillor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Through your worship to Mr Tenazzo, just for the comfort of those that are viewing at home, just to clarify, it seems like people are maybe concerned if you have a dwelling, a house, whatever, with a lot of people in there. And I know that you addressed it in this particular report. How are we going to basically monitor, how are we going to make sure that it's not going to be, a house is overwhelmed with too many people, therefore it could be a safety issue and so forth?
Through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. So, a big part of the licensing regime is ensuring the health and safety of the occupants of these units and we've certainly heard stories where maybe unsafe bedrooms and unsafe areas were being marketed as sleeping areas to get a higher number of people into the unit. So, requiring the onsite inspection of our building division as well as fire department will ensure that only, only those bedrooms that are, that meet the building code could be marketed as such, so that essentially the building will only be able to support as many people or sleep as many people as it can under the building code.
So, it sounds like when you go into a restaurant or a hotel, you usually have occupancy yellow certificate that's posted in the building to say that it shall not exceed a hundred and ten people, it shall not exceed whatever, twelve people. So, there'll be some type of occupancy sign or something along that line?
Through you, Mr Mayor. It won't be an occupancy sign, but certainly if a unit is being marketed as having three bedrooms that can sleep six people, then our building inspectors will ensure that those three bedrooms are all legal bedrooms with proper egress. And if there's, for example, one of those bedrooms is in a basement and doesn't have a window, then that particular host won't be able to market it as three bedrooms, it would only be two bedrooms at that point.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that. Second question and last question. What will there, can you just elaborate on the appeal process? So, I understand there's going to be a licence involved and the person has to come to City Hall. Before they receive the licence, you, I think you're saying the neighbours will have to be notified that this particular property could potentially be an Airbnb. Is there going to be appeal process? How will the neighbours be allowed to voice their concerns?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I'll defer to the city solicitor on the licensing aspect and the implementation thereof.
Through you, Mr Mayor, to, that's the question now. I'm going to ask Jeff King to respond to that. He's been the one dealing with the bylaws at this point.
Thank you very much. Ms Fields, Mr King?
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. There is no appeal process set out in the licensing regime. Essentially, there's a list of criteria that any host looking to have an Airbnb needs to meet and then that discretion is left with the clerk to assess whether or not they would be an appropriate host for an Airbnb.
Thank you. And again, I'm very satisfied that if there is a situation, it sounds like it would come back to the department and we would investigate and so forth. So, I have stayed in many of these around my travels. I think they're very good if we can just properly monitor it and it sounds like it's well-written. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bruni.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A question to Mr Tenazzo.
Go ahead.
How are we compared to other northern municipalities regarding this?
Through Mr Mayor to councillor Bruni. At this point, I would suggest we're one of the earlier ones out of the gate. I believe North Bay has formal regulations in place and I know anecdotally speaking with folks in Sudbury, they're also looking at it. But we're one of the earlier of the big five in Northern Ontario to come out and regulate them.
Okay, thank you. Just, I'm going to carry on from that. What is it, what is the province, Mr Tenazzo? Is this commonly now being regulated across the province, independent of Northern Ontario?
Yes, Mr Mayor, yes, absolutely. I would suggest that certainly in Southern Ontario, they've been doing this for a number of years, cottage country even longer, but I would suggest that at least half of the municipalities probably have regulations and virtually everybody's starting to look at them now.
Thank you, councillor Scott. Councillor Scott Nero than Dufour.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through Mr Mayor to probably Mr Tenazzo, just a quick question, might be easy. Do we have Be a Good Neighbour guide that's referenced in here? I see it on there and I know it's been talked about before, but I couldn't find it. Has that been developed yet? Are we ready to roll that out?
Yeah, through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Scott. We do have the Be a Good Neighbour guide and I believe it's, I'll send you the link. It is online and we do have a number of them actually, whether it's a landlord, tenant or a neighbour for that matter. So, we do have those.
Oh, that's awesome. I think we should market it a bit better. I've been asked about that from residents before. I couldn't find it, but that's okay. Send me the link and I'll flip it over. Appreciate that. That was all I had. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, councillor Scott. Councillor Nero.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, comment and question. Firstly, I'm glad, Mr Mayor, that the bylaw includes the revoking of a licence if the property standards bylaw is not met. As I said the last time, this requirement may not be an issue at this time, but I think it's prudent to have it in the bylaw in case issues arise in the future. And just a question that flows from that, Mr Tenazzo, what would be the process for an STR to get the licence back if they're found in non-compliance to a property standard bylaw and the licence is revoked?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I would defer that to legal staff.
Mr King?
Through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Nero. Essentially, the way the bylaw reads currently, it is discretionary on the clerk to revoke that licence and then reinstate that licence thereafter. So, if they are found in future to be in good standing with the city, there is that option to potentially see that licence re-issued to them, but certainly there wouldn't be a reissuance if there are matters currently outstanding or if there's a long list of outstanding matters in a record, so to speak, of non-compliance.
Okay, just so I'm clear, an STR has a licence, somewhere down the road, they're found non-compliant to property standards bylaw, the licence is revoked, they correct the non-compliance, they're just giving back their licence, they don't have to reapply and the.
Per clarity, through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Nero, yes, there'd be a reapplication essentially that would take place before that licence becomes re-issued. So, they jump through the same hoops as they would have had to initially prior to that infraction.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, councillor Dufour?
Thanks, Mr Mayor, just comments. I do want to commend city staff for essentially bringing us back a version of the bylaw that I think is a lot better than the initial version that came to us. I think it is smart for our city to be regulating STRs at an early point in the game. I think that when you look at the experiences of other communities in Ontario, STRs can be a bit of a magnet for speculation in your housing industry and as we've seen even locally, that's the last thing that we need to be a part of our housing industry. What we need for our housing industry to be successful is, you know, responsible people who are offering a licensed service in our community, like Mr Provenceur, who I also would like to commend for engaging in the process. I had many good conversations with him, encouraged him to engage with planning and he did so and I think it really resulted in a better bylaw. So, I'd like to thank all the other members of the public who also engaged in that process too. I think we arrived at a really good spot for our city. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Dufour. Do we have any other comments, questions? So, given everybody who was available, I wasn't going to let you speak, anyway, councillor Gardie. Given everybody who was available and wanted the opportunity to speak, the opportunity to speak so we can, we can call a vote on the regular main motion, all in favour of the main motion, opposed to the main motion? Looks like the main motion passed unanimously. Okay, thank you.
That brings us back to?
Does that bring us back to eight point?
Three point one.
Eight point one? Oh, it's eight point three. Eight point three point one.
Did you want me to read the amended?
So, councillor, we're back at eight point three point one. I'm going to start with councillor Hollingsworth, but before we do, staff, as you're aware, wrote the original motion. So, they've adjusted that motion based on council comment. So, I'll have them read just the final paragraph of the motion, which is the only paragraph that's been adjusted. It's been adjusted for you in eScribe. If you would like to review it there, you certainly can. And then we'll make sure that the adjustment is agreeable to the mover and seconder. That's the case and that's the motion we'll be dealing with and we'll start from there. So, madam clerk, can you just read the adjusted paragraph of the motion?
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the council of the city of Sault Ste Marie supports the construction and operation of the SB Energy BioVeld Energy Ventures and the BMI Group's MillGen Battery Storage Project in principle, conditional upon the developer consenting to the project being subject to site plan control, with city council in this instance having final approval. Should consent be withdrawn, council reserves its right to withdraw support.
Okay, so the motion now, I think, clearly indicates that council will be the final arbiter of this and it will come back to council for final approval. And obviously, if council's not satisfied at that time, it's not a foregone conclusion that we would have to provide that approval. So, I'm just going to ask councillor Scott and councillor Bezzell Allen if they're comfortable with the way that it was amended or do you just not want to move the motion at all, councillor Scott? So, councillor Scott wants to come off the motion. So, is there, they were put on as a courtesy mover and seconder. Are there, are you okay being on it still?
No, I would like to be off of it.
Do any councillors want to move this motion as a courtesy mover and seconder? So, that is the first time in eight years that that has happened. So, we don't have a motion in front of us then on a courtesy, even on a courtesy basis, Mr CEO? Yeah. So, what I'm going to suggest, and I'll suggest this to the developers and to city staff, frankly, I think that developers and city staff should consider what council said tonight because there's nothing for us to decide on. And I think that they could, if they're inclined, bring this motion, bring this matter back to the November twenty-first meeting of. to the November 21st meeting of council, because it would meet the deadline that you identified earlier. I would suggest they come back with a staff report at that meeting. And I'd suggest that you address, to the greatest extent you can, the concerns that were raised by council tonight. I should indicate that for my part, I want to recognize as the mayor of the community, I appreciate the developers' interest in investing in our community. If there were a mover and a seconder for this motion, I would have supported the motion, because in principle, I think it is really important that we encourage investment in the community. And I didn't see any, I don't see any risk in it, because council is in the position to not support the project when it gets more detailed. But I want to recognize and identify that I understand council's concern in this respect. There's a really nice development next to this, which the community, I think, is very favorable to, and I think is added to the quality of life in the community. I don't think council rightfully wants to do anything that could negatively impact that development. And it's not clear to council that this wouldn't. That's not to suggest that it would. It's just not clear to council that this wouldn't. But the reality is, it would be very nice to see that site developed. And I was encouraged by the prospect that this development could potentially lead to an improvement or redevelopment of the pulp tower, because I think that would be critical to the future of our community and the future of that site. So I would encourage council, if this does get returned to the November 21st meeting, have an open mind about it as a prospective development that could improve the entire site, if that's the case. But just to the developers themselves, I appreciate your time and your interest. But with no councillor willing to move in second the motion, there's no decision point for us. But that doesn't prevent you from bringing something to the November 21st meeting, because you did not get a decision today. So it isn't, it isn't prevented from returning, so it can return. Mr. CEO, did you want to add anything to my comments?
Well, Mr. Mayor, you summed it up well. So we will reach out to the proponents to see what they would like to do as the next move.
Okay, gentlemen, did you have any questions or comments for us?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, you know, on behalf of all of our partners, I appreciate your time. And we appreciate the concerns of council. I guess for the record, during the break, I did check a couple of things. And I have two pieces of information, which I think address specifically the councillor's questions. And if, with your permission, I would like to add those to the record, at least.
Sure, sure. Go ahead and do that, and if they change.
We will, yeah. We will, we will forward the detailed RFP, the ISO's RFP document to staff and directly to council and yourself, Mr. Mayor, if you would like. Two things, from the definitions, municipal sport resolution means a resolution or other instrument signed by or on behalf of municipality in which long-term reliability project is proposed to be located substantially in accordance with the prescribed form. Municipal sport resolution or any substantially equivalent letter or instrument addressed the ISO by the Chief Administrative Officer of such municipality or other individual authorized by an executive resolution of the council of such municipality, which indicates that the council of such municipality supports the development, construction and operation of the long-term liability project, which support may be solely for the purposes of the requirements of this ELT1 RFP or the requirements of the ELT1 contract and subject to all laws and regulations. So that is the first one. They make it very clear in the definition that the municipal sport resolution is not, does not bypass any laws or regulations. Secondly, in 2.1D2 of the requirements, proponents must comply with laws and regulations, including for greater certainty, the distribution system code, the transmission system code, the market rules and requirements of any applicable municipalities, as each may be applicable to their contemplated large-scale LT1 projects or small-scale LT1 projects. Proponents must be aware of required approvals, including environmental and municipal approvals, which may be required per construction of the resources if applicable. Proponents acknowledge time is of the essence with respect to obtaining all required approvals if applicable. So I just wanted, those are two things that address specifically the issues. First of all, they make it very clear in the ISO RFP that this is fully subject municipal laws and requirements and that an endorsement does not bypass that requirement to still be subject to all laws and regulations. So I think the proposed amendment, I understand nobody is willing to move it. But the proposed language or revised motion, I think, would be very consistent with that and is consistent with our intent. And as you noted, the BMI Group was very clear. And we specifically, in relation to this site, focused that this project becomes a catalyst and an enabler for things which BMI correctly, I think, anticipated are extremely important to the city, the redevelopment of the tower and that site. And our intent is actually to use the power project as being a key catalyst for BMI to do all of those things. So I just wanted, I appreciate your indulgence, and I wanted to add that for the record. I don't know if that information, you know, shifts anybody's thinking on whether they're willing to move the motion. We would certainly appreciate it, and if not, we will, we will be back to you in November.
Okay, council, you heard those representations. I thank you for them. You know, it was clear to me that I think the motion, the way it was rewritten, would have got you to where you were looking to go in the interim. But I don't know if your comments make any difference to any city councillors. Looking around the room, I don't, Council Gardi? Okay, so Council Gardi's willing to move it, but he needs a seconder. And Council Dufour? So, so the, now, this gets us to a place that if the motion fails, you're not going to be able to return the motion November 21st with a more substantial report.
I withdraw my second, sorry.
Yeah, so is it, so we, I think, gentlemen, frankly, you probably don't want it moved and seconded tonight. Because if it fails, then it's going to be a motion that's not going to be able to be brought back before council for a year. And you currently have an opportunity to bring it back before council on November 21st. So it seems to me that it would be wise to leave well enough alone. And if you and staff working together can get council to a position, the next council to a position where they're comfortable, you might well get the letter and the resolution you're looking for November 21st. And you can submit that with your application that you indicated you're submitting in December.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Council Gardi, did you just want to appear as the mover with no seconder?
I beg your pardon?
Did you want to appear as the mover with no seconder?
There's no reason for that. Yeah, just, it's just no fun.
Okay, that will take us to?
Consent agenda. Okay, council, on the consent agenda, Council Christian, you know, indicated to me earlier he wanted to pull 7.1. So I'm going to start with him. Okay, so we're going to start with Council Christian, because he wanted to pull the first thing on consent. Oh, yeah, sorry. So Council Shoemaker has a conflict. He still wants to declare. So I'm going to give him the opportunity to do that. And then I have an obligation to address something in accord with the procedural bylaw.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, 7.8, which is the Yard Locker Designation Report. The owner of that property is a client in my law firm.
So you do not have to clear that conflict, Council Shoemaker, because the CEO is going to pull that report.
Okay.
So why don't we do that now, Mr. CEO?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the owner of that property, who's a firm had applied for the designation, did contact us tonight, asking us to withdraw the report at this time. So we'll go back to staff for further discussion with the owner. These designations are generally owner-driven, so we do respect the wishes of the owner in that case.
Okay, so 7.8 will be withdrawn, so it is no longer, it will be considered as part of the consent agenda. So I do want to acknowledge that all of you received an email in accord with Rule 269, procedural bylaw. I have to announce that a request has been made to be heard without notice. That Mr. Brown made a request to be heard without notice in the matter. He will not be heard unless there's a motion that is made and seconded and confirmed by a majority of the council. But the procedural law requires me and open council to acknowledge the request. And I'm acknowledging that request. It is up to the city councils to make that motion. And if one of you wants to do that, I have the opportunity to do that, whatever's noted to me that you wanted to do that. So Council Christian, we'll start with 7.1. You wanted to pull that, so we're going to pull that. So that's off the agenda. Do you have any other matters on consent?
No, sir.
Okay, Council Hollingsworth?
7.8 was just pulled. I was going to ask for it to be pulled, but Mr. Malcolm White explained. Thank you.
Okay, so 7.8 is pulled. Do you have any other matters on consent, Council Hollingsworth, since I'm at you?
No, not this time.
Council Bezowallin, I saw your hand. Do you have consent matters?
Just a comment on 7.12.
Okay, go ahead.
Just would like to commend staff for the quick turnaround. Council Dufour and I put the motion forward on June 13th. And I know the folks on Lower Pine are going to be happy to see the sidewalk there and with the accessibility on to Shore Drive, so thank you so much. And I think it'll really create better access to both the Marina and Bellevue Park. And really happy to see that happen, so just thanks.
Anything else on consent? Council Bruny, you have consent matters?
Seven, or do we pull 7.17?
No, we haven't pulled that yet.
Vacant property?
Do you want to pull it, or you want to speak to it?
Well, I'd like to speak to it.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I thank council for bringing this, for council to bring it forward. I thank staff for providing this information. I think this is very, very important, especially in the last several years regarding vacant pieces of property that nobody takes care of. I guess my question to Mr. Pazabon, I think he's here?
He is.
Yes.
Freddie? Nice to see you.
Mr. Mayor and council.
I understand the fines that are there, but maybe you can walk me through, and maybe for the councillors and for our viewers, how long is this process? Because to give you an example, and I think I spoke to you about this before. If I submitted a vacant property with high grass at the beginning of June, by August, there's still high grass that nothing has been done. So maybe you can explain the process. I know it's a little bit off this, but.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Bruny. The, if you remember back, it might have been a year and a half, we had, we brought to council a flow chart that showed the timelines. Majority of the properties are being adhered to those timelines. Usually, a dirty yard notice goes out. We give the property owner 10 days to remedy the property. If it's not remedied on that compliance date, the officer sends a notice out to contractor to remedy the property, whether it's cut the grass. Usually, those timelines fall within 22 days.
But we are, are we having difficulty finding contractors?
About a month, about a month ago, I could say, yes, we were. A couple of new contractors have come on board. And we seem to be picking up a lot of contracts that are being done.
And for these contractors, how do you rotate them, or do you put out bids?
We ask for tenders.
So 22 days, the property should be cleaned up?
Should be, yes.
Even with sending out a tender?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so that's 22 days after the notes. So we're at 32 days?
No, that's including the notice, the 10 days for the notice.
22 days, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pazabon.
Anybody else, Freddie, anybody else in 7.17? So I got two more, so we'll go Dufour then Nero.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. My question is actually for Mr. King, if that's okay?
No problem.
Same report, but, Mr. King, so you have a great section here about significant fines and cumulative fines. My question is, under the Building Code Act and the Municipal Act, does the revenue from the fines flow back to the municipality or to the province?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Dufour. I could suggest that my role as prosecutor and solicitor doesn't necessarily appease me to the finance portion of any fine. So it would be an interesting, a peculiar interest of mine if I was involved in where those fines are dissolved to. But for the most part, what I could comment on generally is if the enacting legislation is provincial, the large portion of that would go back to the province. There are certain agreements that speak to cost sharing of those fines between the province and the municipality. And for the most part, where we enable bylaw, the large percentage of that, for the most part, them in their entirety would then come back to the municipality. So that's kind of the general fee structure, is how fines are shared amongst those levels of government. That answers the question.
It does. It sounds like you have a question for Michelle, then. If that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Michelle. I guess what I'm getting at is I'm trying to understand what would be a way for this council with the increased focus on vacancy provisions, as well as the costs incurred by some of the higher-profile demolitions that have happened under our new property standards bylaw. And maybe this is going to go into a bigger report or motion, but has finance staff given thought to how certain, to how demolitions could be funded in a way that the city just wasn't writing off all of this bad debt on their own?
To you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Dufour. At this point, no, there hasn't been a lot of consideration given to that side of things with the bylaw being put in place most recently. There, we can't rely on the fines, because again, it depends on whether they're collected. So there's an issue with that, and there's not a smooth stream of revenue. We've run into issues where some of the properties where we have written off the recoverables aren't, they're not marketable either, so we're not collecting through tax sale. So there's a lot of other issues to look at in whether or not that we can start, you know, putting aside a reserve potentially, so that we can have this money available when we have these properties that we know we're not going to collect on.
Great, thanks, Michelle. It sounds like perhaps if the Building and Bylaw Task Force meets again for some follow-up meetings in the next council, it might be helpful to have you present at one of those meetings to start kind of creatively looking at how something like that reserve fund could get structured in a way that had minimal impact on taxpayers. Thanks. Yeah, other than that, that's just my comments. Thanks to Mr. King for bringing this back. I think it's going to be an area of focus for the next council. If kind of what I'm hearing on the streets is the case, folks in town really want us to continue to prioritize these matters, especially as they pertain to bigger vacant chunks of buildings and property. So thanks for staying on this and looking forward to hearing more.
Thank you. Council Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank Mr. King and Mr. Pazabon for bringing this report back. It certainly hit all of the bullet points that I had on the motion. I think I started either this term or the last term, the original term, with dirty yards bylaw, maintenance bylaw. And I'm ending this one with a maintenance bylaw. But I have a question for Mr. Pazabon. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think before we talked, but I think looking at the report, and again, it's a very good report. It's very substantial. The tendering process, which takes some time when you go out to tender the job. We talked at one time about the possibility of having a list of contractors that we could bypass that tendering process. Refresh my memory on that. Is that possible?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Nero. Right now, what we're doing where if we don't find, or if we don't get bids on a tender, we do a single source where we actually call a contractor to go out and clean the yard. That's somewhat been successful. We have a list of contractors, but we're not rotating them through. We're still asking for tenders, and the tenders usually come in within 24 hours.
Okay, so, so you're completing that process?
We're completing that process.
Okay, good. That's the only question I have. Thank you very much.
If I can, through that, the report that you have in front of you, I just want to give council a little update. We are doing a proactive approach within the city where our dirty yard bylaws, especially with the vacant buildings and properties, we're issuing one notice with actually two further follow-ups on that notice. So basically, we go there, the notice is sent out. We do our 22 days of if it needs to be cleaned up. And at that time, that notice actually has two further follow-ups. So we're doing two other follow-ups on top of that initial notice to keep on top of these vacant properties.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So now that you brought that up, I guess I have another question. Through that process that you follow now, how many visits?
question. Through that process that you follow now, how many visits are you reducing for the bylaw enforcement officer? Because, you know, and looking at the process, the way it was and the way it appears to be, probably about seven or eight times back to a property our bylaw enforcement officer has to go, uh, before he can take the next step, he or she.
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Nero, the first, no, the first one happens through that dirty yard by law notice and the other two will, uh, be an automatic. Let's say we cut the grass on a particular piece of property and we follow up, uh, uh, within thirty days. Uh, there's no notice. They, we call the contractor and it gets cut, cut again. And same, similar with the, with the third follow-up.
Okay, and if, um, so once it's complied, once the bylaw enforcement officer goes back for the follow-up and confirms that the, we're talking about grass right now, we should keep on that one, that the grass has been cut, he closes the file on that?
If there's another follow-up date, he'll go back to the following, on that other follow-up date.
But if the grass has been cut, and this is a vacant house, we probably know that it's not going to get cut again.
Right.
We wait for someone to submit another complaint, correct?
No, we would go automatically back.
You go back and take a look?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else in seven one seven? Nope. Okay. Uh, do you have any other matters on consent? I see none, Madam Clerk. Actually, I, I have one. I want, I want to recognize, um, frankly, council and staff and, uh, management because, uh, I read seven point two, uh, with a lot of pride. It relates to our credit rating. Um, and I sent Shelley an email and asked her of the history of our credit rating over the last couple of terms. And she was very quick to, to, to not take credit for some of what's happening here. And I, I don't think that's actually correct. Uh, while I recognize that there are macroeconomic issues that affect our credit rating, I think there are a lot of microeconomic issues that affect it. And I think a lot of decisions made by council and the way council conducts itself and the way staff conducts itself and management conducts itself affects our credit rating. I think it was noted in the recent report that we have an experienced administrative staff. Uh, but when we started eight years ago, we had an A-plus credit rating. We're leaving with a double A-plus credit rating. It's increased a number of times over the course of our two terms. I think that speaks to very responsible financial management. Uh, I think that speaks to good governance and good governance decisions that we're making here at council. But the report also recognized that we have some structural demographic challenges. That's not new to us. We've talked about those at this table. Uh, we have a significant, significantly higher percent of our population that is over sixty-five years of age. Uh, and a number of those, uh, those residents are not participating in, in, in the, the labor force and might be on fixed incomes. So we have to continue to be sensitive to, uh, the municipal burden and, and the, the, our ability of our residents to bear the municipal burden. Uh, but the reality is, uh, we need, we need, uh, to grow. And we're, we're seeing some of that. We're seeing some growth. We're seeing hundreds of units being proposed and approved here. We need to see those units come online. But I think it's critical that we need to invest in our community because we're competing with other communities for residents. I can tell you in my time on physician recruitment that, you know, uh, people that we were trying to attract to our community, we're very active in looking at the amenities available here. And, uh, people that are looking at communities now are looking at what those communities offer. So, all that to say that, you know, we're on the right path, but I want to recognize, uh, the good work of city staff. I want to recognize the good work of our executive, uh, to get us to this place. And I want to recognize the governance and, and my council colleagues for, for, I think, the good work that you've been doing. Uh, because you don't, uh, see this improvement, uh, if you're not aligned and working together. And I think going from an A-plus to a double A-plus is a significant achievement in the time that we've done it. And, and it's because we worked together to do it. So I want to thank everybody for their contribution to that, that improvement in our credit rating. So that's the end of the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, I will just read the consent agenda. Some motion by councilors starting in Dufour resolved that all items listed under date September twenty twenty-two, agenda item seven, consent agenda save and accept agendas and agenda items, seven point one and seven point eight be approved as recommended.
All in favor? Motion is carried. That brings us to seven one. Council Christian.
Before I begin, I just want to point out that sadly, this will probably be the second last time that I'll be addressing council.
Probably.
I'm, I'm sure that everybody around the table shares my, my sadness and, anyway, is, is it appropriate for a moment of silence now or should I just?
We should move on to whatever you want to say about seven one.
Anyway, I, I, I wanted to have seven one pulled because, uh, I appreciate the report that came from, um, Mr. White. And I agree with sixty-six percent of it, I believe. The part I'm struggling with is the employee, uh, innovation program. Um, in the verbiage, it says that the former C A O, um, implemented an innovation program. There wasn't a lot said about how it was implemented, how it was communicated, how it was managed. Um, so it raised some concern. Um, you know, there is and always will be challenges for council to manage costs along with staff, um, and deliver the type of service that people in Sioux expect for their taxes. And as counselors, we tend to look at cutting, cutting, cutting. Uh, and it falls on us to, to look for some of those cuts, especially at budget time. Um, I've always believed that your staff are your most important cog in the wheel. And, and I really think it's a disservice to staff if we're not reaching out to them and continue to try to get them to drive efficiencies. We've got new staff coming on board. I think a lot of them have some good ideas, a lot of energy, and I think they need to be tapped into. Um, you know, as we move towards a non-union performance management process, employee, uh, innovation suggestions, um, if they're properly implemented, communicated and managed, um, I think will support the efforts of, of city managers. I mean, I envision a, um, a performance management system when there, where there's measurable and realistic metrics. And I can only see that employee innovation will help drive those numbers. That's the kind of environment you want to create. And I'm reaching out especially to those counselors who are seeking reelection. Um, I, I don't know how we speak about running an efficient city if we're not willing to at least give employees a chance to speak their mind and try to make improvements. I understand that it wasn't successful the first time around, but then again, Mr. White wasn't in charge. So I'm, I'm asking that council consider that that be.
You delivered that line very effectively.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'm hoping that we would, we, we would reconsider that. I really think we, we can't talk about efficiencies and say, well, we tried an innovation program, it didn't work, let's just let it die. So, that's all I want to say about that. My question to Mr. White and, and to the mayor is, if, if council is of like mind, how do we proceed with this to be?
So what, what you would, uh, well, Mr. White can go first since, since you're, you're leading with him.
Keep in mind, I said something.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, do, uh, comps for Christian. So I guess at the outset, I would say that particular resolution and what it, uh, uh, what was done with it was for a very specific point in time. It was for, uh, something that was brought about for originally, according to the resolution, the twenty seventeen, uh, budget process. Uh, in the end, it wasn't acted on until late twenty seventeen, uh, for the twenty eighteen budget process. So as I look at that resolution and I look at, uh, what was done there, it was a very specific point in time action. And, uh, that's the result it had. Uh, it shouldn't be confused with what we do with staff on an ongoing basis and what we look to staff and communicate with staff and they communicate to us on an ongoing basis. We, we, uh, this program itself is, it may have been called an employee innovation program. In fact, what it really was, if you look at the wording of the resolution and what was done with it, it was an attempt to get input into, uh, the twenty eighteen budget and looking at ways, uh, that perhaps some efficiencies could be found. If you remember back to that time, we were just, uh, in the end stages of the C C double A process. We didn't have a really good idea of where we were headed economically. And, uh, there were certainly a lot of apprehensions at that time. So I certainly agree with you on, uh, the need to communicate with employees.
Doing, okay.
Sorry. A lot. And, uh, I can tell you, we've been doing a lot of work to do that. In fact, I just finished today, uh, my touring of all staff at their sites, uh, which I commenced during the summer. This is finally a chance to do that post pandemic, get a chance to see everybody without face masks and talk to them, uh, face to face. And, uh, I'm hoping that that certainly helps me bridge that communications gap. I've had discussions with union executives on, uh, what are the best ways to communicate with staff because we, not every staff works at a computer workstation. They, they all have different operational needs. And, um, even the union executives themselves have been slow to have any material suggestions as to better ways we can communicate and have the, uh, channels. But it is something we continue to work on. And I would completely agree with you that, uh, innovation comes from our staff. And I think really you see that all the time in your council reports and things, initiatives that are brought to you.
So, Mr. White, with that noted, uh, based on Council Christian's comments and, and your reply, why is this still on the list? And do you even need our consent to take it off? Because you're saying it's a resolution that's been satisfied.
Well, uh, I don't know that it was satisfied. It, it is a holdover from a previous administration. Uh, it is a council resolution, so I don't have the authority just to remove it from the list myself, but, uh.
Well, I thought they came off the list once they were completed.
Uh, it was never reported back to council at the time.
So that, that's the true point. So this was never reported.
So, I have a follow-up. Um, so I, I understand what you're trying to do and it, obviously there's a long road ahead of us. But for the, for the public and just for council, there is no formal innovation program for staff. We're not there yet, I understand that. But for the record, there's no innovation program which would include constant communication, some type of reward system, et cetera, et cetera, that typically you'd see in an innovation program. Right now, we're just trying to open up lines of communication to share ideas. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I would, I would say yes, that's a fair statement as to what you've just described as an employee innovation program. Uh, does employee innovation occur? Yes, occurs on an ongoing basis. Does it have the structure of a program with rewards and that sort of thing? Not necessarily.
Whether, whether the municipality is going to apply Sigma Six or Lean is, I think, a separate decision, right? And that's what you're getting at, right?
So, so I guess now that I have that clarified and you've explained it in that context, I'm fine with the report. I simply want to say then, uh, to council that I really believe that's something you need to pursue. I, I don't, I don't see how, uh, as council, anybody could see, sit here and say, we're, we're trying to drive efficiencies and we leave out such an important part of it. So I'll leave it at that. And I hope that you communicate that on the campaign trail and pursue it with staff in the future.
Anybody else in seven one? Council Hollingsworth?
Yes, thank you. As you can see, I was the seconder of that. And I'll be honest with you, uh, I think it was not worded correctly, um, Mr. Malcolm. When this was brought forward, it was just what, um, my wardmate was saying. When I worked in the larger corporations, and this is not new, it happens in different family companies here in Sioux St. Marie, um, usually there is, um, some employee innovation program. Yes, you could receive low points that could add up to, um, uh, a, a reward or something. But I have to emphasize that I think this was not understood properly. And I am the seconder on this. And I do believe that we should have a structured employee program that is comfortable with our staff, that they could make, uh, suggestions, maybe, um, in a, an open atmosphere or more of a private atmosphere, uh, whatever they're comfortable with. But I really feel that we, as a corporation, need to do something like this. And so, um, again, I believe it was misunderstood.
Thank you. Anybody else in seven one? Okay, so we'll call the vote on that, Madam Clerk. All in favor? Carry. I think seven, seven eight was withdrawn, so we don't have to deal with that. And seven?
Two, because to the C A O's presentation under eight point one, point one, the corporate strategic plan.
Okay, Mr. C A O, you have the floor here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, you have the report on your agenda. The report is the, uh, uh, first example of us using our new Invisio strategic, uh, plan management software. Uh, I wanted to just, uh, very quickly go through a PowerPoint presentation and then, uh, allow you to ask questions of myself or any other staff concerning items in the plan. Next slide, please, Madison. So as noted, uh, we're using the Invisio software reporting. This is, uh, it's taken some time to get implemented and in place with staff and a lot of material to put in and processes to go through. But it's, uh, something that we feel will, uh, give us many benefits, uh, as we go forward. There is a consistent updating process for staff with this, which is great for myself and senior staff. It's on, uh, happens on a monthly basis where all staff who own a particular activity have to give, uh, an update that's collected by the program and then assessed, uh, by senior management. Uh, it does give us consistent packaging and presentation, which is always a real challenge when you've got such a varied, uh, workforce and, uh, varied amount of functions that the, the city provides. Uh, it's also going to be a key communication vehicle, speaking a bit to what was, uh, just spoken about, uh, to engage and align staff and council. It becomes a, a package that's, uh, brings the plan more to life, especially with, uh, all our staff. Um, I'll get into how that's going to happen just at the end of this, but, uh, we're really pleased with the, uh, program so far. And, uh, it's, uh, working well. That being said, Madison, we'll just, uh, quickly go through the other areas. I'll just touch upon some of these. I did list out all the activities just to, to give, uh, council and the public a sense of the scope of, uh, the activities we've been doing. Uh, while the past few years have been a little difficult and challenging with pandemic and meant we had to, uh, focus more on operational activities, we have, when you look back at it, done very well, uh, in, uh, still managing to accomplish things under the plan. And, uh, I can say that we've done very well on that score in comparison with other municipalities that I deal with. The focus area of infrastructure, I'll just touch on a few of these. The asset management plans that you had, uh, before you, uh, at the previous meetings, those will be a real key for us and the province to assess our needs, to prioritize them properly. And they're also going to be used by the province to, uh, flow funding to municipalities. So that'll be an evolving thing over time. We still have work on these to do. As we've noted, uh, we won't get to the end of this road till twenty twenty-five as far as complying with the statutory requirements. Uh, but, uh, these, uh, these plans will be, uh, really pretty much of a game changer to inform our future decisions and especially to allow us to do some future things. Uh, I'll mention one thing out of the finance area. There's a desire to, uh, have us embark on a long-term financial plan, uh, covering multi-years. And it's really information like this that's required to be able to do things like that. On the capital transportation side, uh, again, we've done very well all the way through, uh, even through the pandemic. We've been able to get most of our, uh, projects done. And we've been very fortunate in that for road projects, uh, pandemic pricing and market conditions haven't affected us, uh, to any great degree. We've been very fortunate with our local providers. And, uh, in fact, we've done very well in things like connecting links where, uh, the work we're doing right now is really finishing off four phases that we've been able to do in two projects because of favorable market conditions. So that's some good news. Other big ticket items, West End wastewater plant upgrade is, uh, been coming along well. As we know, the transit terminal has been, uh, put off until the new year and doing some further examination and further funding, uh, applications. Uh, the other ones I will just mention on this slide, the Twin Pad Arena is coming on very, coming along very well. And the other ones I will just mention on this slide, the Twin Pad Arena is coming on very, coming along very well. I know I had a tour through the facility about a month ago, and I can't wait till it's finished. It's going to be a facility that no council in the community is going to be very thrilled with. And it's something that's still on budget, not quite on time due to some trade strikes early in the year, but we've done, we're doing very well on it. As council knows, we're building a new mausoleum and transit procurement, I should mention. As you know, we're in a multi year plan with that, and that has gone great strides in renewing our fleet and renewing a lot of our transit services, continues to. Next slide, please, Madison. Focus area, service delivery. This has been an area that pandemic did affect somewhat as far as focusing more on operational items. You will see the K P M G service delivery follow up. We have been working our way through, and we're over halfway through that list. Certainly, some big ticket items, the fleet services review, as you know, you've had that and you have follow up studies on that. And winter control, the next council will be getting the results of the second part of the winter control study talking about efficiencies and budgeting to that. So that's coming along. Civic Centre Security Customer Review, our renovations to the lobby area will be happening this fall. We're doing that in house because of the market conditions we experienced, but we will have some of that where the exterior of the civic centre, as council knows, we've put that off for a future year. Non-union performance evaluation and leadership, non-technical training review. These are two human resource related items. These are areas, human resources has been hit hard by the pandemic as far as operational requirements for what they've had to do. However, we have been able to get some progress, especially with performance evaluations. As council knows, the C E O one was conducted. I am using, or what I'm using for senior management on that is a variation of that process because we are waiting for a new human resources director to bring forward model for the entire non-union. Delegation of authority bylaw, still in the works. We have been targeting some specific delegations, as you know, that we've brought to you over the past, but that will be coming forward for the new council. Digital strategy implementation. We have been able, through council approvals at the past few budgets, to increase our investment in there, both with one time projects and some incremental increases. And we've where we haven't been able to necessarily increase the I T complement, we are making much better use of third party expertise to assist us in that. Short term rental regulations, of course, you had before you tonight. Focus area, quality of life. As you know, community wayfinding, we're very well along in that process, as you'll see around the community. The next four items really come together, a remote worker attraction campaign, welcome and seek immigration, role in northern immigration pilot, welcome newcomers. A lot of work happening in those areas, and we're hopeful that continues because, as we all know, we have workforce challenges in the community at this time. Downtown Plaza project, of course, is proceeding, as is the relocation of the Mill Market. Downtown revitalization initiatives have been an area where we've completed some work with some still to come. The Queen Street Spring Street Urban Design, that will be a subject of a report back to the next council. Quality of life had a number of other issues. I want to note the Environmental Sustainability Committee and greenhouse gas emissions. This is important work, and council has supported that by increasing the complement for us to have a person permanently working there. So that's been a good success for us. Thanks, Madison. And into social and economic activity. Obviously, the future S S M implementation, we've gotten through most of that. That program is wound up or close to winding up, but we're taking the seeds of that. That's why we have a community development function with the city now that we didn't have before. Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, that was completed. A lot of work now with both economic development and tourism development, now that we've for the most part, completed that transition under the city. A new official plan, council is well aware of our progress on that. And next slide, Madison. And we do have some other areas, the Community Improvement Plan for redevelopment of older buildings, the Port Initiative, there'll be a report coming soon to the new council on that, and our work in both business retention and business attraction. To the next slide, Madison. So just next steps that we're doing with the program itself. We need to refine our, the way we're measuring things, and that'll be an ongoing process for a couple of years. In many cases, right now, as you've seen in the report, we have a checklist that is related to activities accomplished, either project related or council decision points. In many cases, though, they're unweighted. Right now, they need to have weighting supplied to them. We need to get that consistently across and look at other measurements we can use that really detail how we're achieving things under the plan. That will also involve adding analytics information to really give strong basis in the plan as to why decisions are being made and what guides the work of the plan. And what will really help us as a communication tool, I spoke in the initial slide of how we will have it. This will really help us communicate the plan to staff and engage staff with what we're doing. We also want to do that with the community. We have a very good model of how this is going to work on our website that we're working on. And it's certainly my hope that we are able to just show you a very quick soft launch of this on November seventh. Your last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. C E O.
So that's the presentation. I just wanted to touch on a few high level things. I imagine you may have questions of me or of specific staff on specific areas in the report.
Counsel Shoemaker did indicate that he had a question, so I will go to him first.
Yeah, just one, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you and Mr. White. In the update report that you gave us, it shows the checklists and the progress of those action items. Would, at some point, would these progress bars, if you can call them that, that show, you know, what percentage of the of the of the project or or task is completed, come back as a regular part of our regular council agendas? So, you know, we've got links in there to how it links to our strategic corporate plan, corporate strategic plan, sorry. Would it also say, you know, how far along the kind of list this has progressed?
It's through you, Mr. Mayor, to counsel for Shoemaker. It's our intention, now that we've got this report system up and running, that we come back on a quarterly basis with this report at the same time you get the quarterly financials.
Okay, thank you. So I was glad this was before you today, council, because I think it's it's a really positive development. I think one of the important things to making our staff, Counsel Christian, more innovative in in being able to kind of achieve goals was being able to track them. And, you know, there's a much, certainly was very clear when we did our I T assessment that we are under invested significantly in I T. But one of the things that we need to do is give our staff more tools to to track projects and their progress and this this software program is certainly a helpful one in that respect. There's still more to be done. But I think it's it's as as they get more adept with this tool and as we use it more pervasively across the corporation, I think it'll it'll add to more innovation and productivity, but it's it's a good start, and it shows that we're well on our way to tracking these things and be able to give council the information it's looking for in a timely and material way. It's positive that you received it today. I don't want to thank the C E O for his good work on it because it certainly was something that he he championed in in life. Any other questions or comments on that, council? Madam Clerk?
We'll just open up. The the motion is to receive the report's information, and I've just opened it for her vote.
All in favor?
And will bring us to agenda item nine point one of a motion by counselors Nero and Bruni, whereas the hill section of Morrison Avenue between North Street and Hargrove Street permits parking on both sides of the street, except from November one to April thirty, and whereas the permitted parking causes a safety concern when vehicles turn onto Morrison Avenue from North Street. Now therefore, be it resolved that the manager of traffic and communications be requested to conduct a review of this section of Morrison Avenue as it relates to the requirement of a parking restriction on both sides of the street for the entire year, and that our report be returned to council for consideration.
Okay, so we'll go to the mover and seconder on that to speak to it, and then we'll give council the opportunity to do so if they have any questions. Counsel Nero, we'll start with you, and we'll go to Counsel Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to get some comments on record as I will, most likely, will be here when this gets back to council. I've spoken to our manager of traffic and is aware of the situation and that there is some urgency in looking at this, although because the November first, April thirtieth restriction is is coming up, but it'll take care of that for then. But the problem is, as I see in the resolution, the problem is is when someone turns from North Street onto Morrison Avenue, you can't see that parked car that's at the bottom of the hill, so it 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 makes for a risky situation. So hence the the motion to take a look at that parking instruction. Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Counsel Bruni?
No, it's very simple. It's just a safety concern, and Counsel Nero wanted to bring this forward for the residents in the area, so.
That's all. Counsel, anybody else? All in favor? Motion is carried. That brings us to nine point two, Madison.
Motion by counselors Gardy and Bezo Allen. Whereas the Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for Ontario is proposing a redistribution of electoral districts, which would see the elimination of the Algoma, Manitouland, Capes case in district and the creation of a mega riding called Sault Ste. Marie. And whereas the elimination of that riding would reduce the number of Northern Ontario seats from ten to nine, weakening the North's voice and parliament. And whereas the Federal Boundary Commission proposal to cut representation in the North is contrary to the twenty seventeen electoral boundary changes for Ontario that recognize the need to add two seats to ensure fair participation for Northern residents. And whereas the new mega riding of Sault Ste. Marie would incorporate Echo Bay, Bruce Mines, Thessalon, Lawa, most of Huron shores, Chapo, Duberville, Hilton, Jocelyn, Johnson, Laird, McDonald, Meredith, and Aberdeen additional, Bummer additional, Saint Joseph, Tarbat, and White River, as well as Hilton Beach. And whereas the following First Nation reserves are also proposed for inclusion in Sault Ste. Marie riding, Chapo number seventy four A, Duck Lake number seventy six B, Chapo number seventy five, Thessalon number twelve, and Chapo Creek Fox Lake. And whereas the proposed new super writings will force municipalities to compete for a limited amount of riding funding, which will further exacerbate inequities in the North. And whereas Northern Ontario's population for riding is already much higher than many other rural and isolated regions in Canada's North. And whereas COVID nineteen has recently resulted in many Canadians moving to Sault Ste. Marie to live and work. And whereas the rural immigration pilot has been very successful in attracting newcomers to Sault Ste. Marie area, and whereas the Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for Ontario's proposal would fragment, diminish, and reduce access to federal representation for the city and area residents. And whereas the Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for Ontario is seeking public input on its proposed riding boundary changes, yet has scheduled only one in person consultation in northeast Ontario to be held in timids. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Sault Ste. Marie urge the Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for Ontario to not reduce the number of N Ps for Northern Ontario, respect the geographical boundaries of cities and the makeup of the current writings, and withdraw the proposal to eliminate the federal writing of Algoma, Manitouland, Capes case in district and the expansion of the existing Sault Ste. Marie riding. And further be it resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Paula Buddy, Commission Secretary, Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for Ontario prior to the September twenty five, twenty twenty two deadline, as well as to Terry Sheehan, N P, and to the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities.
Okay, Counsel Gardy, start with you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. A number of our neighboring municipalities have have passed or are in the midst of passing a similar resolution. I think that this is a terrible decision. I think when we talk about less representation for Northern Ontario, it means less influence, a diminished voice, which in turn equals less or weaker results for the region in a time where we need as much help as we can from our different levels of government. I've been glad to see that members of all political stripes have been working together to have this issue addressed for Northern Ontario and obviously Sault Ste. Marie. In a time where we're faced across Northern Ontario, specifically in Sault Ste. Marie, with the demographic challenges we're faced with, the opioid epidemic that's ravaging our communities, the need for improvement to infrastructure, always looking to develop our economy more, our workforce challenges, and not to mention the indigenous peoples and issues that are prevalent within our our area of Northern Ontario, along with our region playing its part to meet the expectations of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. I believe it is vital that we have as strong a voice as we can, and this decision is, quite frankly, the antithesis to that. So I was proud to put this motion forward and thankful that Counsel Bezo Allen supported it as a seconder, and I have every expectation that every member of council will support this, and it will be a unanimous, unanimous motion. Thank you.
Counsel Bezo Allen, did you want to add anything?
Just very briefly, I certainly echo Counsel Gardy's comments. I just think that it would be extremely detrimental to serve all the unique needs of our northern communities, and I support this wholeheartedly.
Do we have any other comments, questions from counselors? All in favor? Motion is carried. I beg your pardon, Counsel Shoemaker?
Would you like to pull a bylaw?
Which bylaw would you like to pull?
Twelve point one point sixteen, I don't know, twenty twenty two dash one seventy six.
Twenty twenty two dash one seventy six, which is the Mill Market relocation.
Correct.
That's fine. So we'll just vote on that one, sir.
One seventy six?
Yeah, that's twelve point one point one six, Madam Clerk.
So a motion by counselors Gardy and Duport that all bylaws under item twelve of the agenda under date September twenty 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 two, save and accept bylaw twenty 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 two dash one seventy six be approved.
All in favor? Carry.
And this is a motion by Counsel Scott and Bezo Allen, resolved that bylaw twenty twenty two dash one seventy six being a bylaw to authorize execution of the agreement between the city and Russo General Contracting for the relocation of the Mill Market be passed in open council this twentieth day of September twenty twenty two. That's open for those.
All in favor? Most. Motion's passed. Bylaws passed.
So that, Counsel Christian?
He was in favor.
So that passes eight to three. Kind of a motion by counselors Gardy and Duport, resolved that this council move into closed session to consider an item concerning the proposed disposition of property and one item concerning labor relations or employee negotiations. Further be it resolved that should the said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to discuss the same matters without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
Yep, all in favor? Carry.
And a motion by Counsel Scott and Bezo Allen that this council now adjourned.
All in favor?
I think I thought I did enough talking. I think I thought I turned off talking.
All right, well, it's four o'clock, so we are going to get started. Everyone can trickle in, so it's an entry, free entry webinar, so we'll get started. So for those who don't know me, my name is Emily Cormier. I am the Sustainability Coordinator at the city of Sault Ste. Marie. And I'm very pleased to host today's webinar regarding Planning for Sault Ste. Marie, Parking Reform and Sustainable Development. We've got some terrific speakers today that we're just so thrilled could make the time to join us. So I'm just going to go through a couple of opening remarks and introductions and then we'll turn it over to our very anticipated guests. We've had about 71 people register for this webinar. Not too sure if they'll all attend, but we are recording it, so we'll be sure to get it out for those who couldn't make it today. So just, I've got to switch my slides here. There we go. So just a couple of guidelines. Because this is a webinar, please ask any questions by using the Q&amp;A function in the bottom of your Zoom screen. Oops, my slides are jumping. And if you want to speak, please raise your hand and I will unmute you. I ask that you please keep your comments brief and to the end and try to keep them to a minute or less so that we can have as many questions and comments as possible shared. So for our agenda today, like I said, I'm going to be doing a few opening remarks and some introductions to our speakers. And our speakers today are Laura Flaherty, as well as Brent Tadarian. Laura is from the city of Kingston and Brent is from Urban Works. We will then open it up for some questions and answers and talk about some closing remarks. I'd also like to just put a shout-out here to the city of Sault Ste. Marie's Environmental Sustainability Committee, as well as our planning department, who are responsible for bringing this webinar and presenting it today. So thank you to the committee, as well as to the Sault Ste. Marie Planning Department. I'd also like to just do a quick pitch regarding the Environmental Sustainability Committee. We are quite new. We were established in 2021. And this is a committee of council at the city of Sault Ste. Marie that supports projects that relate to environmental sustainability. They oversee the review and implementation of the city of Sault Ste. Marie's Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Plan. They also review and recommend funding applications to the city of Sault Ste. Marie's Community Development Fund. And this, this fund funds projects that reduce emissions, encourage environment, energy efficiency, water quality improvement, re-greening, waste reduction and active transportation. Local nonprofits, as well as city departments, are eligible to apply. So if you have any questions about that fund, please reach out to me. The committee also supports initiatives that promote environmental sustainability and conservation of the local natural environment. And they create and highlight opportunities, like the one today, for the general public to learn about and advocate for climate change mitigation and encourage outreach and environmental manners, specifically education. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce our first speaker, Laura Flaherty. She's an MCIP, RPP. She is the Project Manager in Planning Services for the city of Kingston, co-author of The Power of Parking and was the lead on the city's new zoning bylaw project approved in April of this year. Laura has a background for working for a development lawyer in Toronto before starting with the city of Kingston. And Laura finds innovative and creative policy solutions to problems that require strategic thinking. Thank you, Laura, so much for attending today. Our second speaker is Brent Tadarian. Brent is a national and international thought leader on better cities and a lead, leading global practitioner in city planning, urban design, transportation and advanced urbanism. He advises cities, governments and best-practice developers across North America and around the world. Brent's establishment of Tadarian Urban Works in 2012 followed six years of significant achievement as Chief City Planner for Vancouver and six years as a transformative planning leader in Calgary. He started his career as a-
Emily, please, please don't read that whole bio. It'll, it'll put everybody to sleep. I think, I think, I think that's a great introduction.
Good enough, then. All righty. Okay, well, you can all read it all and you've also seen the registration and have probably read it on your own. So without further ado, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. I will also apologize. I wanted to do a land acknowledgement before I began this meeting, so I will do so now. I'd like to acknowledge with respect that though we are gathered virtually, I'm speaking to you today from Robinson Huron Treaty Territory, the traditional territory of the Inishnaabe, home of Garden River First Nation, Batjwana First Nation and the Métis Nation of Ontario. I also acknowledge that this area is historically known as Bowotting. The city of Sault Ste. Marie recognizes the importance of our relationship with the Indigenous community as we move forward in the spirit of reconciliation. Now I believe we can go forward in a good way. So without further ado, I turn this over to Laura.
Thanks, Emily. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Fabulous, thank you. So I was going to start by introducing myself and Brent, but I think Emily did a great job at doing that. So thank you for inviting us this evening to talk to you about The Power of Parking, a new parking paradigm for Kingston, which is a piece of work that Brent and I co-authored as part of the city's new zoning bylaw project. My, my role with the city of Kingston is as a project manager and planning services. So I'm a registered professional planner. And under the, the planning policy projects, I, I kind of am focused on some of the, the larger, more major policy pieces, like the city's new zoning bylaw. So I think, Emily, in your slideshow, you, you broke out the time between Brent and I, but we, we've since decided that we would be approaching this presentation a little bit differently than, than normal. So we are going to do a little bit more of a conversational style throughout the presentation where Brent and I will both share on both slides. So we're not going to stick exactly to the, to the timeframe that you had in your presentation.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And just in the spirit of that, my involvement with the city of Kingston is that I've been an ongoing advisor to the city since two, beginning of 2018. So I, I, I advise the city on everything relating to planning and transportation. It's a very open-ended relationship. And Laura was actually working on the zoning bylaw and parking for a while before the chief planner asked me to, to assist her. So it's, it's indicative of the kind of interaction that I have with the city. They asked me to get involved wherever they think I can help. And that certainly, this is, I, I think it's fair to say, Laura, this has probably been the most interesting opportunity to work with Kingston of everything I've done for them since 2018. And that's saying a lot because we've done a lot of cool stuff.
I, I'd agree with that, Brent. Okay, so for those of you who aren't familiar with the city of Kingston, I'll, I'll just give you a very brief primer. It's a smaller city in eastern Ontario. It's about three hours from Toronto, Montreal, two hours from Ottawa. It's located at the junction of Lake Ontario, the Rideau Canal and, and the St. Lawrence River. It's home to a military base, many hospitals, large employers, Queen's University, RMC, St. Lawrence College. It has a permanent population of about 132,000 and an additional 30,000 when, when we actually factor students into that. In recent years, the strategic priorities of Kingston are very similar to many municipalities across Canada with a definite focus on climate action, housing affordability, economic development, the health of our residents and alternative transportation. So the main project that initiated this discussion about parking was exactly as Brent spoke to. It's about the new zoning bylaw. So as a project manager on the new zoning bylaw, I think it's really important to understand the context and the timeline for that project to really understand how we were able to arrive at where we did with the power of parking. So the new zoning bylaw project started back in 20-